My goal is not to see the end result be a kindler gentler SAP. That's not my vision, right? My goal as it relates to SAPD and we can talk about it at length is to make you guys the best. And what I think give you guys whatever you need in order to make this the safest damn city in the United States.
So can I, can I ask you here? Oh, it could, could a head of an agency also be involved in malpractice?
Yeah, 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 yeah. It's called, in fact, the Italians have this word called malgoberno, right?
Malgoberno.
Yeah, it's bad government. Because it's personal for me, because of my life's work and my mom's life. I think that San Antonio should also be the sin that gets as close as possible to eradicating domestic violence. As quickly as possible. You know, what if three women in San Antonio have a domestic violence violence story to tell or will have a domestic?
Absolutely.
That's a, that's a seemingly high.
Do you think Mayor Ron Nierker likes the police?
I think.
Blue Wolf Podcast.
This episode of the Blue Wolf Podcast is brought to you by Blue Line Professional Inspections. Check out BLProInspections.com or call two one zero seven seven one eight eight three one for all your inspection needs, including home inspection, wood destroying insect inspection, sewer drain inspection, and onsite water treatment inspection. Blue Line is a first responder owned business.
Hey, everyone, welcome to the Blue Wolf Podcast. I'm Willie Kent two. Today, of course, I'm with my partner in crime here, David Sapansky. But this is a really, really exciting podcast that we're about to do. Very first for us to have a guest opposite of anything law enforcement, anything like that. But we have mayor candidate for 2025 councilman of District A, right? Manny Colias.
Thanks so much for having me.
Thank you for talking about this. This is, this is gonna be a great conversation. Good deal. So, um, I don't want to go in the long story how we came to this.
Yeah.
You know, cause it kinda is, but I will say this. When we asked you or whoever our contact is did ask you right away, you're like, let's do it.
Yeah.
And then you come in, let's do it. I mean, this is awesome. I think a lot of the people that, um, you know, cause you're a politician that are looking at politicians to guide them and then their city in all kinds of ways, the economy, public safety, things like that, are looking for someone, I believe, personable, not some robot.
Right.
It's gonna say these politically correct things. I understand you have to to an extent, but I think people just wanna see reality.
Right.
From that person. Am I correct?
Yeah, you, you know, I find, I, I find that we're living through a moment in American history where people are sick and tired of, of canned responses to good questions.
Yeah.
Um, I think everybody's got a pretty good BS meter, right? And when they hear it, they know it and you lose them, right? And I am refreshed, right? I feel grateful when somebody tells me what, you know, gives me an honest answer to a good question. Right? Uh, and we were talking before we started the cameras, you know, that's why I love podcasts. And that's why I love that you've gotten into this, cause the long form podcast is the perfect medium to have conversations about difficult things, right? Uh, and, um, I said yes, for a number of reasons, right?
Okay.
Number one, I said yes, cause I heard about you guys and you guys were doing good things, uh, and having the conversation that matters. But, but number two, um, I, I just think it's so refreshing to not talk to, um, the same four journalists and get asked loaded gotcha questions, right? Well, and I'm, I'm fully prepared coming in here today to have just a really good faith, honest, uh, honest conversation about difficult things. I know you guys have a lot on your mind and happy to do it. Uh, and I'm happy to get invited.
Awesome. Uh, tell me a little bit about yourself. And I'd asked you that, you know, how long you've been to San Antonio, where you're from? What, what do you do by trade?
Sure. So I am, uh, my parents were still very upset that I couldn't get into med school. So I didn't go to law school. And we, uh, my wife and I, uh, we got, we got two teenagers, seventeen year old, an eighteen maxed. We, uh, you know, we're, we're children of immigrants. My wife is, uh, was a, a lifelong school teacher, uh, graduated from the charter. This recently had discovered she was the incoming queen.
No.
She kind of been keeping.
But she took it with you.
I know. And, uh, we, uh, and, but we both met at Trinity University.
Okay.
Uh, and I was smitten and just overwhelmed. Made back her to my first day of school, uh, met her my first day of school at Trinity and, uh, you know, I've had a crush on her for, since nineteen ninety-two. And so still we, uh, you know, and then I, I fell in love with her and in turn, you know, I just fell in love with the city to, and stayed here, but gone forward, I guess. Uh, and I chose San Antonio, went to law school at some areas and then, uh, could've gone anywhere after that too and stayed here. And you know, what's interesting is that my career started off like a lot of other baby lawyers careers. That is, uh, was representing pretty much anybody who would come through the door. Right? We call that door law, especially as a father. And, uh, but some.
Relates to.
No, I, you know, I, I, uh, that wasn't my, I wasn't passionate about that, right? Uh, I, I was passionate about just, uh, more than anything, helping people. And, you know, in this practice of law, if you're, if you're in it to help people, chances are you're gonna make less money. Than if you're in it just to help yourself. And, uh, but at the end of the day.
Unfortunately, it's that way.
But, but at the end of the day, you know, I ended up representing a lot of nonprofit organizations. And a lot of people don't know this, uh, and they're surprised to hear it, but, um, my mother is the CEO of the battered with the children shelter in town. And so she's got, you know, hundreds of employees and, uh, tens of thousands of, of customers to come through her door every year. And, uh, since the day I got my law, I, since I've been the general counsel for this, in this nonprofit. And as a result of that, uh, a lot of other nonprofits came.
Is that the only, uh, women's shelter?
So it's the only women's shelter in San Antonio.
Uh, so that's the one that we take.
Yeah. So, so because you guys were on, you know, in control, right? Chances are you probably would drop off women and children at the shelter.
Very rarely did I go there. I hadn't been a career self.
And so that's awesome. My mom's been there for more than twenty-five years and I've been there general counsel for, for more than twenty-five years. And I have, uh, you know, I, I got to see the side of, of human fragility and human vulnerability that a lot of other people don't get to.
Right.
And, um, that education, you know, of representing organizations that just are there for the sole purpose, serving the most brittle, right? Most vulnerable folks really informed my worldview. So my wife and I, we had children and, uh, uh, and then I, you know, I became the very first person ever in San Antonio to be hired by Toyota Motorcade back in two thousand and three. So I was the very first lawyer. And, um, you know, because of that, uh, everybody thought I was really smart or something. I didn't have a job.
You had to.
I, well, I mean, to, to this day, they haven't discovered enough, right? But then I don't know what I'm talking about. But, but, uh, as a result of that, I got recruited by City Hall and the county, uh, I was the, on the VIA board, right? They put me on the MPO board. With you that, that Phil Hardburger put me in charge of drainage, uh, for his, you know, almost billion dollar bond package. Um, and then I got asked to be a member of the Board of Brooks City Base and eventually became chairman of Brooks City Base. And I got to learn a lot about policing, uh, there as well, from the perspective of keeping that small little city center, Brooks, safe, right? And also, you know, our emergency operations center is there. We had a lot of our SAP K nine, uh, activities there.
So let me back.
So I learned a lot.
I mean. And it's great. You got in with Toyota. How did you get?
With Phil Hardburger? Yeah, so.
The city politics.
Yeah. So, so Toyota at that point in two thousand and three, two thousand and four was the, was the pretty girl at the dance, right? And everybody wanted to dance with Toyota. And so I frequently get calls and say, please join in this board, please join that board, right?
Cause you were like in the end, right?
Yeah. And, uh, you know, and, and San Antonio was doing everything it could to get Toyota to be absorbed into the ecosystem, right? And so we, we, um, we got to, I got to spend three years at Toyota. First three years were just doing community relations and legal government relations, right? So I got to go and be chief buddy in San Antonio from every sector. And that was a crash course on everything, everything that's good about the city and all the things that need fixed.
Right.
Um, and I guess I was mouthing off, uh, and saying, you know what we should do with the South Side? We really need economic development like this and like that. And somebody said, well, then you just volunteered to be on the board of Brooks City Base. And then I was, I was mouthing off about the need for, you know, really an expansion. And then somebody said, well, you just volunteered to be on the, on the board of VIA and, uh, and it was an honor to serve on those organizations. So I was done serving, you know, um, I, uh, I, I reached the point where I wanted to do something a little different. And city councilman Ron Nierenberg announces his right to vote. And so I still look at that seat and, uh, my wife and I were in the conversation and she and I both agreed that there were, that this was the right time in my career, where, you know, my law practice was doing well. Uh, I'd already left to, uh, but also my kids were now very conscious of what I was doing in public. And one thing was breaking apart. And that was that in school, you see, you know, all, all the kids' schools today, and you got the ones. You see these signs all over the wall that says leadership, 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 right? And you ask kids, what is leadership? And they don't know, right? And then somehow at schools and companies, leadership is everything. If it's good, it's leadership, right? Well, if leadership is everything, then, then it's really not. And so I've been spending a lot of time talking with, um, with my kids about what this is what leadership is, right? Leadership means making hard choices, leading out front, not getting distracted, um, helping others before you think by yourself. And, um, my wife's, you know, and I would like, you know, I should do a lot of talking about leadership. Let's, let's see if we can show them what that looks like, cause they don't understand word, you know, Board of Directors, that redevelopment authority or trainings, but, but I decided to run for office. Mostly driven by a desire to show my kids what leadership looks like, right? And then I'll be, I'll be vulnerable with you and all this. Nobody's ever heard you say this, but I thought, I thought I was in the loop. Uh, I didn't think I was in wind this, right? First time I took my hat.
To me, that's actually kind of a good thing, uh, because I don't, I don't care for cocky people.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? And then, I mean, I'm, I'm a pessimist heart.
Yeah.
I, I, I would rather be surprised in the good way than, you know, than expect and to get let down really hard, you know? So that's my take.
But is they, and I agree, I, 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 there's no daylight between you and that. Where, where I was really thinking what would happen here is my kids would see me throw my hat in the ring. My kids would see me talking about things that mattered, make things that mattered to them and their family. And that if I won, terrific, we'd do a great job, right? Um, but if I lost, I wanted my kids to also see what losing is like, right? And losing horribly and losing.
Why did you think you were gonna lose?
Because politics is what it is. And, um, you know, it was, uh, I really didn't have, uh, much respect at that point for politics.
And you're sort of politician.
Yeah, I really didn't. I mean, uh, you know, my, uh, once you become a, and to become a lawyer, you know, your job is to interact with, with the government, right? And governments break in, had a lot of different branches, right? And I'm under practicing law enough to be really kind of disgusted with, with government, right? And, um, I, I found myself at a place where I could choose, you know, I'm just gonna take care of my own and let government be gross and dirty over there.
You do.
Right? Or I can try to fix something which is directly impacting the people that my mom serves, clients, me, right?
Kisses.
And I read something that, um, somebody had said once, uh, it said, our job as parents is to prepare our children for the past, not to prepare the path for our children. And I was like, wow, that guy must've thought he's so smart when he said that, cause that's the dumbest thing I've ever heard, right? My job as a parent is to prepare my children for the path and if possible, help prepare the path for my children, right? Who doesn't want to block the path?
Yeah. You can't leave them, but being able to deal with.
And I saw an opportunity here. I was like, wait a second, that, there is an opportunity for me to help my kids. While I was sort of kicking this around, something really, uh, really important and impactful happened. My father fell down. My father is an older physician, uh, he's a caller and tricked himself, broke his hip. And, uh, you know, I was the only one on call, so I went to go to the house when I got the call from my sister. The dad had fallen down. I met the ambulance there, rode, uh, to the hospital with him. And the, the firefighters who were, you know, are in the ambulance were telling me, you know, it's a good thing that this happened late at night, because had it happened during the day, your dad would have been in a much, much worse situation because ambulances are caught in traffic too, right? I was like, you know, I didn't even thought about that. And then, of course, it became a ride about complaining about municipal government, how they're not taking care of traffic and all that. I was like, yeah, that's, that's pretty interesting. Well, then a few months later, my dad had collapsed again, this time with a, with a much more serious condition. And it happened at night and it was not the same firefighters, tone, different set of firefighters in the ambulance. And I said, hey, what, what happened if you guys had been stuck in traffic? They said, uh, your father would be dead, right? Thankfully, I'm my father still, but I festered for two reasons. One, because our excellent, you know, EMTs, I fire department answered the call and were there to take care of him. But two, he's alive today because collapsed at like eight, by eight P M. and not at five thirty, right? That's other stuff. That's crazy. That one incident is what pushed me over the edge. And I went home that night after the hospital, so I'm not alive, I'm running for office. And, you know, it's no wild rights since.
That's awesome. And I could ask some.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, it just struck me like you're, if you're going through this, this, this process, right? And we're glad that you did because you've done a great job. I, I don't know you, I bet you this is the second time. Uh, I do know people that do know you and they've always spoken very highly about your support for law enforcement and for fire. So, but you know, going back to the original part, what you were talking about, you had mentioned a little bit about the work through your mom, about how you had an opportunity to see the black market.
Yeah.
Side of people and the dark side, right? And so, you know, as police officers, we get too far too much of that. So it's, it's great that somebody in your position actually knows what that is and is not just talking about what they're thinking. So that, that's a, that's an awesome thing to know.
I used to complain, um, and it was funny then, uh, but I used to say, nobody ever starts a conversation with a lawyer with the words, I got good news, right? That's not true. I mean, sometimes that, people do bring you good things. What I've learned now, after eight years on serving on city council and after, you know, twenty plus years of serving in Mike Assley at, at this battered women's shelter, is that literally when an officer's on patrol, nobody tells an officer their names. Almost every time you hear a beep or a phone call or somebody comes in, somebody is crisis. When you show up and the lights are on, you are dealing with people at their worst, um, and at their most irrational sometimes. Um, and you are expected to come in, you, the officer, are expected to come in and be the peacekeeper, right? The law enforcer, the counselor.
True.
Right? The problem solver and sometimes even, you know, um, life advisor, right? Uh, and, um, I don't think people really realize out there exactly, I, I don't realize, cause I've never walked any shoes, but, uh, I think I'm a little closer to realizing that most of my constituents are. So I spent a lot of time talking to constituents about, you know, the total, that all that pressure, that negative nasty stuff that you guys have to deal with, that I always ask the question, how do you think these officers take that home with them, right? You can say, well, they leave work at work without, right? I mean, there's not a bag, you can put that, those experiences in and then just pick it up again the day you show up at the station. You take that company and we were talking earlier about, you know, it gets so bad for somebody who's been in, leave Lou, that they take their own lives because they can't continue to be the, there's this term called the sin eater, right? They can't continue to just continue to eat other people's problems, right?
Jason.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I needed, have you seen that quote? It's, it's a really good quote.
Do you know what a sin eater is? Well, that's what we are. We are the sin eaters. It means that we take the moral excrement that we find in this equation and we bury it down deep inside of us so that the rest of our cause can stay pure. That is the job. We are morally indefensible and absolutely necessary. You understand?
And I've been meaning to steal it and put it somewhere, you know? But I just love the fact that you recognize, or at least verbally recognizing on this podcast and that, that light is heavy for police officers and people just don't. All the things that you outlined, there's a hundred more that they're responsible for, that people just think they're supposed to be responsible for. You don't take a lawyer and ask him to do surgery. You don't take a surgeon and ask him to go litigate and report a law. Where police officers nowadays, the gamut is so large and there's no mullet.
Well, well, there's, there's one additional problem, right? Is that I do think the public also has, uh, and the public is allowed, I mean, because we elected officials deemed that this bullshit that police officers should be all those things I just listed out, right? And we've reached a point, we are now tasking to these officers with things that they honestly shouldn't, right? You guys are not psychiatrists.
Yep.
Right? Um, and you're not marriage counselors, right? And to expect you guys to go out there and be the things that you're not trying to do, um, and that the things that you didn't expect, you know what, they get a mistake, right? Um, and so we also have the additional problem that is, uh, and, you know, it's, it's gonna be the eternal problem so long as we're bipartisan, right? People vote their representatives up from their neighborhood, send them up to City Hall, State Home or Washington DC. And the people that we send up are, they're experts in absolutely nothing.
Right? So I wanna, wanna back up a little bit, cause we were like taking off on something, but it's just to let our viewers know.
Yeah.
I mean, being a mayor is about so much other stuff.
Yeah.
The jet, you know, um, all the, the projects to add to San Antonio.
Right.
Uh, obviously you're on this podcast.
Right.
A Blue Wolf Podcast to discuss public safety.
Right, right.
You know, so I don't want the listeners to think that you don't care about anything else but public safety.
Yeah.
And that's kind of a given.
Right.
But I just wanna make sure and say.
So, so thanks for that. And so I, I just, if the listeners will indulge me, um, you know, we have this federal constitution that they all have to follow, right? Uh, we all raise our hands as elected officials, I swear to be faithful and uphold the constitution. But there's also a thing called the city charter, right? And which is the municipal constitution. It's a really boring document. If you ever wanna take, you know, take, uh, you, you know, an opportunity to read through it, you'll fall asleep within the first two pages. But it's the first two pages that contain the most important provisions. And it says, the role of municipal government is to guard and provide for, to get welfare, safety, right? And that's our job. So if it's not public welfare and it's not safety and it's not the order of the running of the city, then we should be doing it, right? Thankfully, the most basic, basic service that, uh, everybody in the public understands that we have an obligation to carry out and deliver is policing, right? And so nobody objects to, you know, city council getting in the business of policing, you would think, right? Except that we've all lived through this weird moment in America history where there's literally conversations that were had about dissolving police departments, defunding police departments. I felt like I was living in upside down world, right? It was banana phones, crazy. So, um, I lived through this in government, which is certainly something I never, ever thought I would live through. And thankfully we survived, right? Because other cities literally experimented with what happens if you don't have police officers.
But I mean, I'm learning from that. Do you, I don't believe that we learned from that. My, I have a saying that, that it just depends on the topic, but it, it always comes back to this. If the city of San Antonio were tasked with inventing a better wheel, it wouldn't be round.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Like we would take what, what works and tries to enhance that.
Yeah.
Cause that's, it's round, that, that has to be round. We would try something else and we don't listen necessarily to the pulse of the United States, you know?
Oh, no, we're, we're very disconnected. I mean, but we, I mean.
Yeah, but we still have these people that are going, no, we have to continue. We, we still need to defund the police because they're big bad and mean and whatever minorities and put them in jail. When, did you see what happened in Minneapolis? That shit didn't work.
No, it doesn't.
It doesn't work.
Seattle.
Yeah, Seattle.
They're all refunding the police.
Yeah.
And thankfully, and probably gonna get off on a tangent here, it was tried here in San Antonio and it didn't happen. And, and you always have these people go, no, no, the police need more money for training. That sounds good. It's really good that they didn't defund us, but what kind of training are these guys giving us? And it's all this bullshit, you know, to be kinder and gentler on crooks that are coming to the community and others.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? So, and that's a, you know, like I told you, we can run off to a whole vein of things. So, so just from the outset, I don't want you guys to be kinder or gentler. I don't want SAPD to be kinder or gentler. You know, I want us to be better. You know, that, you know, you deal with that?
Kinder and gentler people. Cause you hire good, good people.
That's the point.
That was the whole point. Like how long was our, our, our process? It is almost a year to get hired. You know, they interviewed our neighbors, our family, all that. That's good. Hire good people, but train them to be skilled at protecting themselves and the public. Cause all that comes into the same place, you know?
So I, and, and again, my goal is not to see the end result be a kindler gentler SAPD. That's not my vision, right? My goal as it relates to SAPD and we can talk about it at length is to make you guys the best. And what I think give you guys whatever you need in order to make this the safest damn city in the United States.
So with that, the first question that we have are, what are your goals? I mean, it's the seventh largest city in the United States, right? That's huge. I mean, like there's the seventh largest city, that's a metropolitan of one point four million people. What are your?
If you so, so we are no longer, so first of all, you're right, we're the, with the, with the seventh largest city. However, it's really important to contend in the context. We're also the fastest growing city in the entire United States.
What's up?
Uh, and people are rushing to live and they're bringing their opportunities and their hopes and their dreams and their kids and all that great stuff, but they're bringing their problems too, right? And they're bringing their cars, right? But they're bringing their travelers.
Yeah.
And, um, if we don't catch up with that growth intentionally, right? Uh, in terms of first responders, then we're malpracticing, right? And as a lawyer, you know, if I malpractice, I lose my license, I'm fired, right? Um, and as elected officials, if we malpractice, we just say, well, I didn't seem like I did it.
So can I, can I ask you here? Oh, it could, could a head of an agency also be involved in malpractice?
Yeah, 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 yeah. It's called, in fact, the Italians have this word, uh, called malgoberno, right?
Malgoberno.
Yeah, it's a bad government, right? Um, and, uh, you know, it's, it's, um, yeah, it exists. And so, so let me, let me tell you the goal here, right? When I'm mayor, my, my, my goal is to start a conversation with this, with this community about what we need to do to become the safest city in America, right? I believe in the power of incremental change, right? And continuous improvement, that's great. But if you're not continuously improving towards a goal, then all you're doing is just waking up and, and every day and just doing something. But you're not working towards a stated goal and you're not going anywhere, right?
Um, regardless if you have time left in your tenure.
Correct, correct.
That you left it better than when you showed up.
Correct. So, so everybody's goal should be that this be the safest city in the United States. If you're running for mayor, your goal is that we not be safer than any other city, then you shouldn't be in that job, right? Number two, um, because it's personal for me, because of my life's work and my mom's life. I think that San Antonio should also be the sin that gets as close as possible to eradicating domestic violence. As quickly as possible. You know, what if three women in San Antonio have a domestic violence violence story to tell or will have a domestic?
Absolutely.
That's a, that's a seemingly high, it's really a very serious problem. My goal is to get met, involved and solved. So it, you know, whenever I go to these domestic violence conferences and all that, sometimes I'm only got.
How much pushback would you get, what you just said? And I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
Cause everybody's in it together. It's just, you know, the men have to understand that side too. But you know how we're in this empowering women.
Sure.
Era.
Sure.
Never. How, how much pushback do you think you would get?
You know, I thought I would at this point. I thought I would, and, but this is something, these conversations I've been having with men, and that is, hey, man, those women in those shelters, that's someone's daughter, right? There's a dad who's crying himself to sleep because his daughter is in that shelter, right? At someone's, you know, there's a brother out there who wishes he could murder somebody because, you know, because his, his sister, you know, is in the hospital with broken cord, you know?
Yes.
And so, um, I have found that there are a ton of them out there who are really invested in making sure that this doesn't happen to their daughter or their sister, right? Um, and so, you know, there are some men out there that are, you know, still living in, uh, you know, in like fifty years ago.
Yeah, they are matches.
Yeah. And that needs to be honest with you.
That's a lot, those are lofty, lofty buildings. But family violence, dating violence has been at the forefront for city of San Antonio for a long time. They've added additional sheets for officers to fill out and data. I'm not minimizing it. I'm just saying your, the goals that you, you've done two out of three. And those goals are, so it's a, it's a personal goal for you because your mom's involved.
Right.
You know, so you don't wanna put your mom at business.
Right.
My point was. Well, actually you do, right? Well, actually you do, right? You, you want to where your mom doesn't need to have a facility like that one day because there's no women that are getting.
So I want my mom, she, and she'll tell you, her goal is to work herself out of a tent.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
We want to make sure there's no more need for a women's.
So I have two daughters, three granddaughters. Of course I'm on.
Right. So, and I believe in, I, I, I'm a true believer. This is what I tell my kids. You know, um, if you're going to set a goal, right? Your goal better be a homie, right? And I don't want you to be like, hey, I'm just going to be mediocre, right? Uh, my goal is mediocriety.
Sure.
Or good enough.
I'm here to walk. I'm talking about baseball.
My family, whenever I hear my kids, you know, aspiring towards mediocrity, we shut. They're very quick though. Like, no, 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 we don't do small things around.
Right.
We all, we work towards changing the world for better by doing the court of flames. And that's what leadership with capital L means, right? Now, you're absolutely right. We may never attain, right? We may actually, you know, at, at the end of my tenure, right? As, as mayor, we may not be the safest city in the United States. Damn it, we're just trying as hard as we possibly can to get.
Yeah. And I have to say that because we fly that, I fly that flag properly, believe it or not. I ran, but I, I, it's, it's, it's where I came from and I'm always a proud, very proud of being in El Paso.
El Paso is the only city in the top 20. It's 715.
Yeah.
Of the safest cities in the United. El Paso is one of the safest cities in the entirety.
The only one in Texas.
In the top two. So, yeah, I was like.
But my, my, my point is, is, is why we asked you here today in, in the, and, and, you know, obviously to talk about what it would take to get there. I'm going to get the third one, but at some point policing is going to have to be a part of that first goal.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, and then number three, right? Is it in order to accomplish goal number one, which is safest city in the United States? Goal number two, right? Get as close as possible to eradicating domestic violence system in. You need to have a police force, right? That can carry out that goal. Cause goals by themselves without resources and tools, right? Or energy is death, right? You're, uh, and so.
That has been the tier rate.
Yeah.
Significantly on the S and P D.
So my, my layman's perspective, right? And I'm 30,000 feet up here in the air. Even I, all the way up from here, should pick up on the degradation and the deterioration of known, right? On the ground at S and P D, right? Um, the, the chipping away of trust, right? Uh, that officers handle with their higher ups. More importantly, with the ultimate higher ups, with the city manager's office, with, uh, you know, the deputy city manager, with chief and with the city pop, right? The ma- the next mayor comes, he needs to embrace that problem, right? And really, really not be distracted. Like I tell my kids, lead, but don't be distracted from it. Absolutely. Don't, like, anything to distract you from zealously and intentionally repairing ground, right? And bringing trust levels up to where they should.
Um, we can hear a whole podcast on just that. So we came on the police department in 1980, right? That's some of the viewers were bored there, right? At that times, even people on the police department. Like I can tell you, and, and again, we, we asked him, like, we call you councilman or do we call you?
Yeah, I just call him, I'm telling these guys.
So I just don't want anyone to think we're being disrespectful.
The only people, the only people I make call me, me councilman is my children. So.
The first five years, the first five years from 89 to around 95, maybe a little longer, but not that long. Uh, you could go to the grocery stores, the mall, you could see people out running. We were in SAPD shirts. We were proud to be SAPD officers. The community were proud to have us as SAPD else. I never felt like somebody, you know, we all did dangerous work, right? I mean, we're going to attest to that, but you know, I was never worried about anything later. We started working narcotics and gangs and we stopped doing that, right? But when we were working in SOU and working patrols, we were proud to, to fly the SAPD flag. You don't see that even. To me, that's a, that's a culture issue. That's a huge problem with the culture. And I think it's just been exasperated over the last, I won't say since 2006, when the current chief got here, because we're not going to just make this about him. But definitely since he came back.
Yeah.
And, and since he came back, the culture has been just degraded to the point where it's almost suffocating the men and women that do it.
So, so in order to achieve goal number three, right? Which is to make sure that San Antonio has the best police force in the nation, right? In order for that to happen, the policemen and women need to feel proud of the organization, which is served, right? Um, additionally, this only happens if the people who, remember, were not police officers feel proud of them, right? Who wants to tell their children today, hey, you know what I got? Great idea. I dream of you having this great career in policing. That happens very, very rarely. Nobody was raising their kids and saying, I want you to go into policing. That used to happen, right? People were like, that's an honorable career. You will have, you know, great benefits. You'll be surrounded by other people who are doing the right thing, but also you will have the admiration of.
And that's our normal career.
To serve. It's noble and it's not a job. It's a fashion.
It's still this, and I tell people, because we have people, um, I do approach me. Hey, my son wants to be in law, you know, can give us advice. And my first thing is like, don't, the old Joe Biden comment, don't, you know, don't do it. And one kid, and I, I think this story is important, guy, they do, they go to lifetime all the time.
Right? I can tell you.
Yeah.
Yeah. Let me know if you need, we need to spot you.
Sure.
Yeah.
Uh, but this guy, his dad, his son would be, you know, in law enforcement. And we kind of went through this, you know, whatever. And, uh, he really wanted to, so I, I helped him out, you know, got him in touch with white people. We ended up getting hired, you know, and okay, all right, good thing. He gets into the academy. The kid is in great shape. Uh, he's a very smart kid. He's like one or two at PT. Uh, I think he was in the fourth month of the academy. One or two and, and at, um, academics.
And then.
Like someone you want on your police force and your goal for the best, that this guy's on his way. Uh, some, and I call them four by fours because our standards and hierarchy have lowered. This girl who's four foot by four foot, uh, approaches him about fitness and, 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 you know. Tips, cause she can obviously see, you know, that he practices what he preaches and maybe he can give her some tips on how to lose weight, get better shape, whatever. And, uh, he says something, not thinking about it, but it did to us when I tell, tell the story. She was eating a bag of nuts, mixed nuts.
Yeah.
And when she's talking about, you know, eating the diet, he says, well, the first problem is that you spend those guts. Points at the, you know, so everything's there. Of course, people with minds like mine are going to go, oh, you know, you know what he meant, whatever. But, cause I asked him about the question, you know, what, what was her reaction? Cause nothing. She just went on. She's not, you're right, you know, but I'm trying to learn what else to do, you know? It just went on. There was no like, oh my God, I can't. She had no reaction to it and what she thought would eventually happen.
Right.
She goes and complains on to management. They get, uh, um, HR involved. They come down, they, he's gone.
Yeah.
So when back of the day, that would have been like, hey dude, you know what I'm saying? They're like three miles or whatever and you roll on. Instead they kick out their, one of their top two cadets because of this bullshit that this chick now. The other lesson would have been to her, come here, you're going to get way worse when you get out on the street. If you can't handle this and in this context, you don't understand it, this is probably not the profession for you here. You know what I mean? And then that's how we're losing those people that you're striving to get. Because we have that group within the, the, the city government that are so worried about this bullshit, you know?
When my daughter came to us, my wife.
Yeah.
You know, and she wanted to be a, a police officer and she graduated in 2000 with BTS, my youngest daughter. Well, the world was crazy, right? I mean, you couldn't go anywhere, couldn't graduate. And I literally said, I, I think you should follow your mom's path, you know? And instead she sat down and talked to us like an adult, which was more than I expected at that time. And she says, Daddy, I want to do it not because you did it, but because I feel like I want to serve my community. I wanted.
But how do you tell a kid that?
So she came on, she got through the academy, I served here a couple of years. Now she's with federal government as a, as a special agent. I was telling people, I didn't have a problem with telling my daughter, if that's what you want to do, then do it. And I still think there's academy classes full of people that want to do it. I think it's, it's a, it's a leadership issue and you, and you touched on leadership early. It's like they want to do it, they do it for the right reasons, even though the standards may have been a little bit. But then they come in and they should look at the men and women at the very top of the organization with which reverence. To say, hey, I want to aspire to be like the people that run the organization, but unfortunately. And this is not a biased statement. It's an experience statement from all of us, you know? The leadership of the organization are failing the men and women. And I'm not putting, asking you to, to, to agree with that statement. I'm just saying through all the things that we have on this outside, through bad decisions.
Right.
lack of support, losing arbitration hearings because you don't know the facts, you don't have a good rest.
Right.
Those are tough things for people to have to do in a world where it's already difficult to be of themselves.
So, so let me, you know, pack some of, some security thoughts, right?
Again, right? Um, I want the safest city in the United States. I want us to be the city that really most intentionally and most aggressively attacks this problem of domestic violence. And three, I want it to be all done with the best police force in the US. In order to get the best police force in the United States, not, it's not just morale, right? And it's not just respect from the top down and.
Oh, but.
Right? And trust, just, you also need to invest in what I call filter, right? My, my son asked me the other day, he was, Dad, so what is wrong with policing these days? Why, why are, you know, so many of these police officers caught on YouTube doing stupid things shouldn't do? And, and I don't think you guys are, are going to disagree with me. There's a lot of knuckleheads that they call a one, two, three, stupid things.
And we've also.
And those male women should not have.
There are people.
We've worked with these. But, but, uh, I, I did tell him, look, what's wrong is not the police force, right? What's wrong is at the management part, right? Uh, uh, and, and, you know, all police chiefs and all city councils and city managers have created these filters, right? And you apply for a job, you go through an interview and you get into the job. What is wrong is our filters are broken, right? We can have the best police force so long as before you get into the academy, we do a better job of actually asking the question. All San Antonio's want to ask, right? Tell me about your upbringing. I want to hear stories about your brand, but tell me some life lessons that you learned in school, right? I want to know you, right? Because I want to make sure that by the time you get out of the academy and I give you a credit and a badge, right? That you're the kind of person I want holding a, bearing a badge and out there, you know, acting with, you know, the public on any second. Same thing. I don't think we're good at. At Toyota, when I was there in 2003, you know, soon after, what's the, what's the plan capital? Um, we have to fill 2,000 jobs, right? We put the search out and we said, we're going to fill 2,000 jobs, apply to Toyota. We got 200,000 applications, right? And Toyota had this beautiful opportunity to really focus in and get just one, the top one person. You would think that they would go after the people with the best rifles, correct? That's not what they were then, right? You would think that they would pick the people who were the most athletic and the strongest so they can, you know, lift the parts and the components. That's not, that's you. Their number one focus was on character of the person. Were they a problem solver? Did they work well with other people, right? And, um.
That's from the Japanese.
I, I think it's, well.
The culture.
Yes, right? Um, because there's this.
There's a T Q M model.
Right? But still, they were informed by character and they were informed by something called the soft skills, right? Does the person, I mean, you literally want to sit next to this person, you know, for eight hours a day. If you were to raise your hand and ask this person, I need help, would you have the feeling that that person would help, right? Um, and Toyota, I would tell you has the best employees of any first station. Uh, in, in the automotive industry they've ever seen. But that's because they focused on character first, problem solving second, right? And then everything else just sort of falls into place.
Do you know what our promotion system?
Are your promotional system?
Yeah. Do you know what our?
Do you know, nobody brings, nobody brings that to city council. I, I have no idea. I have no idea. That's a shame, right?
Or even the hiring system. I mean, I, I, I think what you're saying is absolutely spot on, but the way it works is somebody applies, they take them out to the academy. They do this very abbreviated obstacles.
Right.
And can't finish it. Two minutes and 40 seconds, you're washed. You get an opportunity to call that. You get through that, then they start putting you through, they sign an investigator and they put you through the testing and the victim's psychological and additional fit with things. And then the polygraph, and then they go through that. If you get through all of that, then it goes over to a review board and then ultimately the chief, they make a recommendation and the chief says, okay, we recommend this person be a clinic to be cabinet. The chief signs of your operative position as a cadet, you start on this table. So there's really not a lot of interaction outside of just the basics. Well, we used to get majority of our people from those expeditions.
Yeah.
Right? And because they were structured in some way, I don't know where we get most of our people from now. I really don't.
Well, we don't, you know, what he said, we, we used to have, there was a time, uh, where, like I took a test. My, my first police exam, it just was at 2,000 people, read balcony, conventions out.
We took that test together and I had, it was more like 3,000.
Yeah, there was a lot of people.
And then there was a period shortly, I think in the mid nineties, they were camping out at the east side substation because that's where recruiting was.
Yeah.
Overnight, just to get in. So talk about picking from the top 1%. Now, because we have those numbers, they're not picking from that, that upper echelon of people that you want. You know, the, the, the very ones, I totally agree with the character of people. And, and that, again, that's a longer story as to how we got there with that. Uh, but one of the, the, the greatest sayings that I've seen, like from Sun Tzu, you know, or. Your men will not fight for you or die for you. They don't respect you.
That's right.
And that's leader. And I'd like to say, you know, without bragging, just what it is. I was in SWAT and I was in rope, the time repeat offenders. And regardless of my rank, I was tasked with leading operations. Planning on set like people there, you know, to include the, the, the projects that we had. Um, or the investigations we have in rope running them. So I wasn't ranked, but I felt like I got a lot of respect from the guys because of where I came from and what I did. You know what I mean? So they respected me because they knew I, I, I taught the talk.
Right.
I walked the walk.
Right.
You know what I mean? And that's not, no disrespect and I, to, you know, David's position, because I do know that he came up through, he did talk the talk and walk the walk. But when you take a simple test, just a test, and you go from this, the highest score. And you choose all the way up into sergeant, because once you get a lieutenant and captain, now you have an assessment, you know, which is an extra. Extra application for whatever next rank is. You get a lot of these people just because they're, um, you know, savants and memorizing words. I mean, cause you can give a book on animal husband, you know, they can pass a test on that stuff, but they have not done the work.
If it's weighing really weird, 30%, the written accounts for 30%, the assessment counts for 70%. So you can totally get mediocre part of the, um, the writing part. And you can score 88 and then just knock the other part out of the box and now you 70%. I, I'm a first, I mean, I don't think I'm going on a linear. If you're going to be putting people in charge of life or death decisions, right? And then, uh, and giving them the, the job of dealing with folks in the most, most vulnerable, most critical moments. And, and people in crisis, he, you know, I mean, and then you say, okay, well, what's their, what's their, what's your selection criteria? They did great on a written test and they ran fast and physical.
There's no break for you to think that, really. I mean, I, I'm being honest, like you had a written test and everybody gets the same opportunity.
Right.
Somebody studies harder, someone's a fantastic. You, you, you introduce assessment centers and then you get assessors from other agencies to come in to basically assess your answers to responses. But there's formulas for that. So they're checking boxes. So there's no easy fix. But I do think, like anything else, the military, Toyota.
Yeah.
Lawyers, doctors, police officers, they're just some people that are sell more than us. But it's a difficult world where there's no second chances. And we've talked about that, I guess. You're, you're just one bad deci- one decision that can be perceived as bad away from having your life competing. Torah.
Yeah.
On the news or the administration, for being fired, you've seen nice. In case that will put your picture on there for three days in a row and your family has to deal with it. And then oftentimes later, it will be shown that what you did wasn't as egregious as they're thinking about.
Right.
But they won't walk it back four years later.
So one of the reasons that Toyota was able to attract so many enthusiastic applicants was because Toyota's brand is brand of, you know, quality. It was excitement. There was a bunch of hype, right? They're green, they're recruiting jobs, whatever it is that you think is attractive about Toyota. Everybody wanted to be part of an organization like shined, right? And that, you know, that it, that this just generally perceived as glory, right?
World record.
Right? You can put out, we're hiring 2,000 police officers tomorrow, right? We're not going to get 200,000 applications for S and P D now, that's right? We'll be lucky, right? If we get, uh, you know, 2,000 applications, right? Uh, and, and there's a problem there, right? So what's the difference, right? The jobs, by the way, being a police officer pays much better than being a Toyota employee, right? Um, you know, the benefits are great.
Here, here they are.
Here they are, right? So why would we not get the same number of enthusiastic applicants for S and P D? I think the problem is a metro problem. One is that we're living through a moment in American history where being a police officer is more. I think the problem is a metro problem. One is that we're living through a moment in American history where being a police officer is no longer respected. Like.
It's not just here, it's across the.
It's a process, right? But number two, here locally, you don't have leader. You're saying, we are the place where it is the best to be a police officer, right? Why don't we have our city mayor out there on bill difference actively recruiting police officers saying, I am your mayor. Anybody, you know, we get forty million people visiting us every single year. Why doesn't that a single tourist see the mayor on the billboard saying? If you're interested in a career in law enforcement, choose San Antonio. That is such an easy thing to do.
You tell me that, right?
Okay, I I will. And why do you not see, uh, you know, us very, very publicly? Wrap the via buses. All these via buses, they have personal adage, is a personal injury lawyer, uh, you know, right? We own those buses. We literally own them. Why don't we wrap some of them and say, if you want a career in law enforcement, San Antonio loves you. How about just this? Thanks SAPD, right? We don't, we need to get those kinds of messages. So Power has to put out its own commercials telling people. Hey, you know, we're San Antonians too and we want the same things you guys want.
Thanks SAPD. Lives that, right?
San Antonio's mayor and city manager. And everybody should be doing cheaper commerce, should be putting money into ads like that, right? Because better SAPD, we need a better safe, you know, and a safer business environment. There's a reason for that.
Right.
The reason is, is because it's, nobody's telling them that should be a priority, right? So mayors and. Number one, they shouldn't have, right? But if if people tell them, hey, this is important to us, right? Please give our SAPD officers the same kind of, um, thank yous for your service messaging. That you give to. In the military, right? But for some reason, if you're wearing a blue uniform, you know, it's okay for your elected officials to. You know, take a dump on your profession, right?
And that's one of the questions that we have here and I and I know you've seen it and if you don't mind, I just wanna read it because yeah, it it's kinda right in that wheelhouse. Again, this, you've seen these questions, but if you wanna modify anyway, so it's prior to Cheryl Scully, who's our former city manager. Came here in two thousand and five and left in twenty nineteen, SAPD has always had a great and mutually respective relationship with city hall. That's a very true statement. That changed during her tenure and this current one. Why do you think that is? How can we get that adversarial positioning back to what a mutual respect? The previous city managers were all very pro-police. I think it was Wee Fox, Alex Presenya, Terry Brechtel outfit. Names are wrong, Miss Budnell.
Right on.
But they were very pro-police and then they, then it just wasn't. Is that a fair question?
That's a hundred percent fair and it's act, it's a hundred percent accurate. I think, um, I think Terry Brechtel did a really good job of. Of managing that relationship, right? Um, Terry Brechtel, if she's anything, she is, she is a consummate professional, right? Um, and even though, you know, there were always tensions between the union and the and the employer over paying his benefits. That professional respect was always that, right? Under Terry. Uh, something happened when Cheryl Stelly was brought off board, um, you know, and that relationship became toxic, right? Now, you can blame Cheryl.
She brought it.
She brought it. She brought, you know, that Cheryl and her decisions, right? Were the impetus that created this toxicity, which then obligated the union to bring Mike Kelly. And have him pour on, you know, his, you know. Right, and and literally just both of them pouring more and more gas.
So Mike Kelly is out of our class too.
Yeah, yeah, and we talked to him recently.
Yeah, yeah.
And you can blame Cheryl for that, or you can blame Mike for that. Like, there's two things I wanna point out. One, I am a, by training, I'm a, I'm a laborer and employment lawyer, right? So arbitrations and all, that's how I make my living, right? Um, and I used to train large employers, large, large employers. On how to have positive relationships with the workforce, right? And one thing I always said was, you deserve the union that you get, right? And every time there's toxicity to the union and an employer, you can always draw and recognize from one set of bad decisions. Employer made that, you know, created this casting effect where you reach crisis.
Can I just interject? Cause I I just wanna point out something and I and I'd really like your take.
Yeah.
If it's fair. One is, and I I know there's gonna be a lot of cops that really are, but like, I thought Cheryl was an incredibly gifted businessman. I don't think she was very gifted in terms of her, in a personal sense. You know, but but I, but I think she ran the city remarkably well. But where I think she, and this is me in my experience, and I've had it at different levels, like from the detective, a sergeant, lieutenant, captain, and then for short was an interim deputy chief. And I've met her a couple of times. She was like, she hated unions. She taught at UTSA, talked about the toxicity of unions, wanted to bust the unions. Wrote books on it. I think it was called Greedy Bastard.
Greedy Bastard.
She was very open about not wanting organized unions.
Yeah.
So I think when you have that, you're already behind the curve because you're not operating from a objective stance.
So so a leader's success, right, is, um, and you. Cheryl's success, right? Um, if you're gonna, if you're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna determine whether she was successful or not, then you're gonna have to tell me what it is you're looking at, right? San Antonio bond rating, which is incredibly important, right? It's one of the most important things that that cities do is to make sure that our credit rating is good so that we don't have to pay bajillions of dollars in interest. So we.
Awesome.
Still remains one of the top, uh, in the, right? Um, and so regardless, yes, way down, I think, pointed to, but there's three agencies that rank that. One of those agencies downgraded us. But we're still one of the top cities with a rating. So you can't look at Cheryl's, uh, rating, uh, work. And and really criticize it. She was successful there. Economic development, job creation and all that, private side, Cheryl's agree, right? Uh, and, you know, managing the tourism part of the business here in San Antonio showed an excellent part of that. Downtown redevelopment, you can't, you can't look at what Cheryl did.
That's what he's talking about.
That was terrible.
I agree.
But there's nobody in San Antonio who can look at, you know, Cheryl's relationship with SAPD and say. That looked like it was well done, right? And so back to what I, what I was saying was, should you blame Cheryl? Should you blame Mike Kelly? Here's where I come in this. Um, there's this great philosophy in my son interviews, my son's eighteen and he reads, he talks. Uh, so he goes, Dad, you gotta read this. It's called, uh, um, you know, Stoicism by a guy named Epictetus, right? And Epictetus says, the small-minded leader blames others, right? The average leader humbly blames himself, right? But the truly wise leader knows that blaming is foolishness and useless, right? And so I, I will let historians, right? Uh, we really kinda delve deep in what was broken way back in the head. But I can tell you what's broken there.
Yeah, right.
What's broken there is that the men and women, right, the ones who are. Way too many of them are telling. And and you guys hear it more often than I am because they're terrified of pocket accounts of theirs. Uh, that they don't trust decisions being made for them, you know? Had a military plaza. Um, way too many of them are telling me that information was being hidden from the skinmakers like.
One hundred percent.
Yeah. Way too many of them are telling me that way. Uh. When shit hits the fan, right? And they turn around and look for support from the, you know, chief and assistant chiefs and all that. Some of the rooms out, right, and that officers who felt feel like they're left out to dry, right? Way too many of them are telling me that, uh, they're not hearing. Uh. They're not even hearing the most basic forms of support coming out of the mouths of city council members and the mayor and the city. Um, now, we can sit debate whether they're wrong or they're right, but if they're, if they're telling me, think about how much courage it takes for. Uniform police officer will walk up to a classroom and say, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell my crew. We are like, I'm gonna tell you what I think is wrong. And then they always end with, please don't, don't mention anybody. That's like horrible, horrible, horrible way of doing a business.
We're gaining steam.
Yeah.
Because they are relating to the things that we're talking about.
They're terrified.
They're terrified to say they're like, finally, someone is speaking out.
Yeah.
It's not just a circle at a party. It's actually they, you know, it's getting out. Anybody can see it in the world.
Yeah.
Right, if they really wanted to and and whether if it's just a like, I agree that makes them feel a tad bit, a little smile on their face. We, we why, you know, we read in an exit, and who's sorry, we read in an exit, exit interview, you had talked about morale earlier and and you know, we get to talk. And a former deputy chief wrote an essay interview straight to Eric and Maria. And in there, he says, every time we talk to the chief, like as senior leadership, right? You wanna advise the head of the agency, this is another problem, right? How do we address this? This is what we're seeing. The, that there was a huge morale issue, the chief says, I'm gonna agree with that or that's not my problem. This is, this is supervisors' job to fix morale. And we did a podcast called, You Can Beat the Rap, But You Can't Beat the Lie. We come up with these old mates. And.
I like.
And 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 it was just, it's so true, like they just, and and I'm not keep pointing at at him, we've done that. But whoever's in those positions downtown, when you hear, like you, if you're, you come there, we hope that you do. Um, and you would hear that there's a huge problem in your candidate or your administration or the people that are on your team. What did you wanna say? You said, let's fix this.
Ronald Reagan, whether you like the guy or not, said something that I think is just one of the wisest things, uh, uh, in the like the official side. He said, personnel is policy. Who you have at the top, right?
The podcaster Dan Bajina, people are policy.
People are policy. And, uh, if you're not conscious of the fact, then you get past all the cool bills and ordinances you want. But you have goofballs and, you know, and knuckleheads out there executing all these things. What results do you think you're gonna get, right? And so I do think it is incumbent upon this next year.
Right?
Uh, to ring a bell, right? And say, this is a new era, right? In San Antonio street, it's a new era in the San Antonio's history of relationship with police officers. And and city hall, mind you, I did not say it's a new era of relationship between police union and city hall, right? At the end of the day, we're talking about the, I'm talking, I'm laser focused on office, right? The union and city hall will never fix the issue of police.
Yeah.
Right? We have to start talking about these in terms of men and women who happen to wear the uniform, right? And every single time I hear about the words headcount or human resources for workforce, my blood boils. Even though I'm a laborer and employment lawyer, I'm not raising my children, you're not raising the children to be workers, right? To be headcount or to be somebody who's human resource, right? We are talking about men and women who carry very, very heavy load, right? And then have to go home and still make dinner for their kids, right? And raise their kids and they want the same thing every other sentence, every other part of their life that everyone else does. And I need a mayor. I want a mayor. And you're not a wet, right? I I will. I still live here and I still, I want a mayor who every single time somebody sends something. Like with a very broad stroke insult on the, you know, on the good intentions of police officers or the, the honor. And that, you know, that with which you guys conduct yourselves. I need mayors to be the, in very, very clean punchback, right? And say, not in my town, absolutely, right? In my town, right, we are the men and women who run towards danger, you don't take a dump, right? Um, I don't remember the last time we had a.
So I wanted to ask you a spotlight.
Yeah.
Uh, I think it's important that whoever leads and not just the chief, I mean, hopefully he. He likes the police, but obviously we have the government, you know, and that really run the show. Cause everything kinda triples on down. Uh, I think it's important that the mayor of the city of San Antonio actually likes the police. You know, likes policemen, likes monsters. I'm not saying overly likes, but just understands their necessity. Do you, do you think Mayor Ron Nerkert likes the police?
I think, um. I've never heard him articulate the words, I like the police. Uh, I've never asked him. Um, I I hope that if he were sitting here in front of you, he'd say, yeah, I like the police and I. Yeah, and you, you'll have to judge for yourself.
Yeah.
Uh, I I can tell you however. That as he has evolved as a mayor, um, he has, I think. Uh, aired more on the other side, uh, was of making sure that the police have the resources. Need. Whereas at the beginning of his term, he was focused a lot about other things.
Right.
Uh, and I I think that it's just a product of also just age and wisdom, right? Uh, and the reality is, is the older you get, the wiser you get, the more you realize. Get better than well like your police, right? Cause those are the ones that are gonna show up when you come in.
Uh, not that he has a full-time detail of the lease officer.
Right now, now he's got Peter E. Gus, right?
Cause this, this rolls into exactly, and then why I'm doing that, asking that question. I mean, obviously the obvious, so the obvious thing. But to his defense, and to help you answer that question.
Uh.
I used to run into him regularly at the downtown headquarters gym.
Right, right.
He's in very good shape.
Right.
You know what I mean? So I'd see him.
So if you didn't like the police.
Take your leg days. Off balance, but I would guess that if he didn't like the police, he sure as hell wouldn't work out there. You know what I mean? Cause they also had the fire, fire's not too far, their gym, which is right there at San Saba by.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So to his defense, you know, he's around and I didn't talk to him too much. He'd be pretty much a, hey, what's up? And he was friendly, you know, but.
Uh, I I don't wanna evade your question. I wanna be, I wanna make sure I'm answering it and I'm, and nobody watching.
No, but.
That's a mealy mouth answer, meaning.
No, it's not.
I I don't, I don't know if he, I I don't like the word like. I think the man appreciates things, right? I think appreciate is a word. I think that's what we want, right, is appreciation. Um, I think that he is a, um, he's a dad like me. He oftentimes talks to me about, you know, really what the job is about. It's just about making sure the city is there and safe for our kids. And so I have no reason to believe that he doesn't appreciate me. If Ron and I. Disagree on this, right? Um, I think it's on the volume of. Of speaking out for things, right? And so earlier I was saying, you know, I want this next maker, Kate Whip, you know, next mayor who stands in front of city hall on date god and says. This is a new day, this is a day where we're going to recruit the best of the best, right? We are going to retain the fancy of the past. We're gonna make sure that any man lives here. Of their police officers or make sure that every police officer that lives here and works here is proud to be in this department, win which are us. And then just as vocally enthusiastic you say. But nobody, right, in my city gets to shoot at officers. Nobody in my city gets to. City gets to impede officers and frustrate their work that they're trying to do on with all of us, right? Uh, and if you do, right?
By the action.
And, uh, and that includes public efficiency.
So that's something we have heard a mayor say in a very long time because.
And that's that. It's, it's, it's heartbreak.
Yes, there's other ones that are gonna make your city the safest, right? No, it's not gonna be any, anybody else. It's these guys, boots on the ground to go out there and stop this criminality. Where there'd be just standing there, be present, but I obviously don't catch it up. Um, so I I really wanted to get to this story because reference to that question.
Yeah.
Mayors liking police.
Right.
I don't remember the year, but I was working for a guy who had a regular gig, security gig at, as a police officer, security at Care Channel.
Right.
And, uh, I'd fill in for him every once in a while, so I was good, you know? And my job was basically sit behind the receptions, you know, it's, I'd walk around every once in a while, it's a beautiful place, have, you know, hardly anything going on. But and this was before, I didn't get involved in the politics till I had my first child.
Okay.
I did not give a shit about any. You know, cause I was flying by the seat of my pants. So I wasn't a Democrat, Republican, you know, this person, whatever. Uh, so Julian Castro was mayor and they announced, hey, the mayor's coming by to their channel. Oh, and I'm thinking, dang, you're excited. I'm gonna get to see and meet the mayor, you know? Uh, no expectations whatsoever. He shows up, of course, people are all, you know, shaking hands and, you know, sucking his ass, you know, whoever. And when it came time and I'm in uniform to come up and. Yes, greet him. Number one, and and we're, when you're. Do it, a good police officer.
Yeah.
Pick up on the body language and the vibes of people in front of you. I read it mostly for the crooks and the people that involve possible suspects. I wouldn't expect it from a mayor. This felt like, uh, someone came up behind me, gave me the sledgehammer, this feeling I got of disdain. He wouldn't look me in the eye and when he shook my hand, he gave me like a dead fish. And I hate that from a man, you know what I mean? When you're doing, but I, I felt like I did something wrong. You know, I was like, do I stay, you know, or what is that? What was that interaction? And then when you start talking to people, he didn't like the toes. He didn't like those people. He didn't like those people riding with him, the, you know, the the officers there assigned to the detail. Like, see, what's your problem with? So that was way back then, this was before George Floyd, Realitator, all this bullshit. He had this disdain. And that right there, and I read it, he kind of had to go with status quo because there wasn't that big push and nation to be anti-police. Now I believe it's just popular, you know, although I believe the tides are changing. And should you be mayor? I believe that you could be as historic as Mayor Rudy Giuliani with each thing in New York.
Yeah.
If you take that and just what you're saying, and I know it's not made up, I can tell it's genuine, that you can change this city to get us back on track. Create a good police department, the best, I'd love the best. Of course, we fall short, you know, we'd be just as good. And and then and then move on and be able to work on all those other projects that, because you can't have a new Spurs uh arena downtown or baseball if people won't come, if it's not safe. And and that to me, you know, is is paramount to anything. Whatever you wanted to, you want to have a trigon tri, you know, festival in Travis Park. By all means, do it, but they need to be safe.
Sure. You know, and it's not, it's not something in the abstract that you're talking about. You got, for example, the Fiesta parades on the bridge. I mean, hell, there's paninis out there, right? Whether you were pro police or not, there were bullets flying that night at Market Square. Um and you know, everybody was looking around, looking for cops, right? And you know, uh everybody, everybody is pro police when there's bullets flying, right? They love you when they need.
Well, I saw it from administration and so on.
Yeah.
All of a sudden, you know, I'm just a lowly patrolman, but when she hit the fan, they were like, when he had. Yeah, really, now you want to know my. My tendency to forget, can I circle back to this conversation about mayors? Because I I think it's interesting. One is that just what you've said so far is so refreshing, really, and and you know, we're, I don't know if you're listening, but you don't traditionally hear that. And you know, I I know he, he were elected councilman in twenty sixteen.
Yeah.
So I was a an interim deputy chief for about six months in twenty twenty, that was that was a year, right? And so we did a lot of different things. So from that time, like on Zoom, right? From that time up until about four months ago, I was telling someone, I can't remember City Hall ever saying anything positive about the police department. Now, about five months ago, they had like SAPD Appreciation Day or something, where the chief tells all these people to go on there and be there. But it was really disheartening not to hear anything positive. It was almost like the police were like a four letter word for a long time, or or it's just like a monster, we don't talk about it, you don't.
Right, right.
So to see it coming back around, people like you that are running for the highest political position in the city, talking about the police in a positive way, talking, literally saying, you can't shoot at our police officers. On one of our podcasts, we go back to forty nineteen, there were a hundred and forty four officers involved shooting since that time.
Yeah, that's a lot of officer involved shooting.
Fortunately, we've had officers injured, but not killed the last ones in twenty eighteen, I've been winning those shootings. And it's um it's nice to hear somebody that's going to say, you can't do this to people that are protecting us. And to our earlier conversation off camera, I always feel a little silly when I say this, but I said this on the first podcast I do with. It blows my mind that people see us as adversaries, as bad guys, where we are you, like we live in San Antonio, we go to HEB. I live in your district, Willie lives just outside your district.
And you were always in San Antonio.
You made a statement to me what, and I can't keep you live in San Antonio, you know, because so many of us don't, no, there's a lot of us that do.
Yeah, so sixty percent of firefighters do not live in San Antonio. They live in the county and huge percentage of San Antonio police officers also live in incorporated part of San Antonio.
Some people may say the fix to that is like it used to be to be employed as a public servant town.
So I I would.
So I'll tell you, it used to be like that, right?
I would, I'll tell you what I'd like to do. Um and I've talked about this with Eric is, you know, figure out ways uh monetarily incentivize a police officers to water them.
It's good too.
But you need uh doubt me in a mortgage assistance.
You do, no.
San Antonio home, right? If you're within city limits and you live in one of my neighborhoods, that's a good thing, right? I love it, your police officers to be able to take the cars home, right? I mean, we all know criminals are stupid, but they're not stupid enough to commit crime is right in front of a police car, right?
No, that's a good thing. I think you're going to the same thing. That's a good thing, but what we've done as society has done.
Yeah.
To include the leaders, the long push thing. I won't say just here, but talking about here, those guys don't want to do shit because they're in fear of getting in trouble.
Yeah.
You know, that's that question I was hoping that we could get to because and if you don't mind, it's a, but 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 to your point, Matty, and I think it's such a good point. You think police officers, whatever that percentage number is, we'll say sixty percent of live outside of San Antonio because of the pride of San Antonio or because of the property taxes of San?
Neither.
Yeah.
Neither, I I think um, I think what the what I've talked to officers, like, why don't you, you had a choice, but why didn't you live in San Antonio? Most of them say, people want to live in the city um full of people that don't respect me, right? At the end of the day, I just want to go live, you know, away from the people that I don't, you know, and that's a either right, wrong, but that's what we feel, right? And then two, I've also heard officers say, why do we want to pay city taxes to put money in the salaries of the city councilman to last?
Yeah.
Right? That was very profound and I was, I was like, you're right, you know, why would you want to go out, risk your life every day and part of that paycheck? Go into the city councilman's pocket, right? Who got elected by raising his earfirst and saying, defuck it.
I told you I was at East Side Command.
Yeah.
And and one of the most interesting times that I had on, I was out there for two years and I was having, that was at the time, we used to have to have community meetings, right? So that captain had to have two year meetings, so people would come and I I had to host those meetings. And there was a lady, you know, and and it's so surprising because I tell people ninety five percent of the people over there love the police. On holidays, you get dollar cookies and sharing gratitude than you'll ever get anywhere else. But some lady was in there, she was talking and she said something about the police. And I said, ma'am, I said, every holiday, every New Year's Eve, every Christmas, every kid's birthday, every anniversary they have, the people that are out here working to like our police officers and your community. And I just remember her looking almost like kind of an epiphany in Oregon. Because the people that are there don't necessarily live on the east side, but they're out there serving the east side of San Antonio. I only use the east side because I was the commander. And it was just such a profound moment that that the people, like the men and women that are working in San Antonio do it every day on behalf of the citizens. Even when they don't live there.
That's right.
And so it's important to make that distinction. They're out there willing to get between the bad guys in you, the bullets in you to keep you safe.
That's right.
Not even neighbors.
And there's, you know, there's, there's the other thing too, and and I think it goes back to some news we discussed, and that is mayors and city council managers, we don't know what we don't know, right? First of all, we're not police officers, we're never walking there. But two, we don't have the day to day access to uh the police, we don't have visibility into the life of a police officer, right? And their and their work, uh their workday and the stress it is, challenges and all that. All we have is the benefit of being, have a police chief, have come to tell us, this is what my officer's need. And then since he's the only one we're hearing from, how do you say no to this, right?
Um you have to trust.
And you have to trust him, right? And then sometimes we get the union coming in and say, well, you know, we think that it's actually something else that they need. And so we've got two sources, you know, we never hear from police, the officers, right? Which is something you, you know.
We're not there from either, I mean, only in this, you know, only sidebar or some stuff.
But what we were, we were talking, I mean, just, I'm convinced to I'm convinced that what we need is an advisory board commission, whatever, it doesn't even have to be former. But I would not be a good enough mayor, right? Or a good mayor. If uh if I didn't have an advisory group of police officers retired at. Just tell you how.
Without an agenda or aspiration, I just need to give you the right information. I'm not trying to be your head of anything.
The mayor has the advisory commission on the status of. The mayor has, you know, the advantage of being able to hear from the committee on LGBT issues, elderly affairs issues, all the chambers of commerce. We even had a youth advisory commission, but we don't have a group of officers retired and uniformed who can speak directly to the mayor with no filters. That's a.
In honesty, in order for.
Yeah, and this, I mean, I think the mayor has been denying himself, all the mayors that deny themselves. Uh the, you know, that really important insight, right? And you guys want to be the founding members of that group, I'm happy to, I mean, I would need. Yes, I would need that. I always tell, I always tell my my law partner and people around me that the smartest, smartest leaders are the ones that surround themselves by folks that are willing to say, nah, that sounded pretty stupid, right? Uh then what you said was was incorrect or, you know, you got a peripheral vision problem here, let me tell you what's really going on. Or you're walking into a buzzsaw or you're being done, right? Let's, and if you don't surround yourself with those people who have license to tell you what truths, right? You're gonna get really bad advice, right? If you're getting any advice, then two, your decision will be less.
So that segue is exactly into this question because, you know, so when you have that, you have people that are pandering, right? For position and influence, right? And then you add all this, we made the assertion, I've made the assertion, I think we both have, but I'll just say, I've made the assertion that the people that are chief of police in San Antonio has surrounded themselves are people that are just absolute.
Right, right.
Recently hired somebody that's not that, and I I've acknowledged that, great choice. But mostly it's the people that are telling exactly what was to do.
Right.
And so I showed you a clip, right, of a of a an arbitration uh hearing. And then ultimately we had a podcast on the outcome of that arbitration, so the arbitrator's fighting.
Right.
It didn't do a lot of justice, it didn't put the chief of police in a very positive light.
Right, I saw it, I saw it this morning.
And so my question is, what, if you don't mind, what are your expectations for the head of the SAPD as it relates to administrative fair, consistent and sustainable disciplinary actions for its members? And do you believe that the head of the agency should set the tone and example for the rest of the membership? Which is, and Nick's gonna put that video on.
He was the one being questioned, San Antonio Police Chief William McManus squaring off today against the attorney for an officer that McManus fired for improper use of force.
The chief defended his decision to terminate Andre Vargas during day three of arbitration.
His approach started way up here, way escalated beyond what it should have been.
Vargas's attorney, Ben C. Fuentes, continually questioned the chief's memory of the two thousand twenty internal affairs investigation as the two rarely saw eye to eye on the facts of the case.
Stands up, right?
It's misrepresented, he jerked him up, he didn't just guide him up.
The back and forth got so contentious at one point that the arbitrator interrupted and told the two men that they were arguing.
I want you to run the video for me.
I want you to answer the question, which you.
And I'm not answering it without seeing the video.
A hearing that was scheduled to end today appears far from the finish line as C. Fuentes continues to try and erode the city's discipline case line by line.
Yes?
I don't know, does it? Show it to me.
Do you think I'm lying to you?
Maybe.
Make sure that we're setting the table here. Um it's a video of Chief McManus being cross examined by Ben C. Fuentes, his front of arbitrator LaCunta um in the uh case involving an officer trying to do his job.
Andre Vargas, officer, and we did a podcast uh on him. He and I, because uh and then me and Ben, because we couldn't get together, that that's why it ended up in.
And the, and if Ben C. Fuentes is anything, he's a damned lawyer. And he's got a reputation for being a damned lawyer and the guy is an old lawyer who knows how to cross examine people and do it savage.
Yeah, right?
Um and he was, from that video, it seemed like he was doing a good job, right? You know, uh I mean, um and from the video, it seemed like uh it was clear the chief was getting frustrated. Uh and they both engaged in some some back and forth bickering, back and forth bickering, until the arbitrator said, whoa, shut down, right? You guys are getting argumentative, this is not helpful, right? Um so I'll tell you, I'm looking at this through multiple lenses. One, as a lawyer, right? C. Fuentes did a masterful job at uh picking a scab, right? Um number two, that arbitrator, being an arbitrator, I can tell you that the arbitrator did the right thing there and said, uh hey, you guys aren't helping me, your job is to help me get to the truth here, right? How about you both start bickering, stop bickering and give me away?
You could tell this person.
And 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 you can tell that both of these guys had gotten under each other's skin. Uh and nothing good happens when you get under somebody else's skin. But more importantly, even worse things happen when you let somebody get under your own skin, right?
But you know that it's a good tactic, guys, on your turn.
It's a great tactic.
So once you get him off his comfort zone.
Yeah, and they do it all the time.
Yeah, right.
I do it all the time and they teach us in law.
I don't think it's a tactic for the chief, though.
No.
You know what I mean?
But but uh Chief McManus has the responsibility, you asked the question, what is the role of top, their pinnacle leader of an agency? He's setting the tone. My answer to that is, if not him, then, ooh, right, right? The tone begins and ends at the top, right? And tone is one of those things that any leader, right? Who's gonna be effective needs to be consciously uh monitoring uh at all times, right? And don't we do this parents?
Sure.
Right, don't we do this husbands, by the way, right? Watch your tone, right?
Yeah.
Pick the fight you're gonna pick, right?
Cause you're gonna lose them all, as husband.
Right, but but the the reality is, uh it, I've always taught people and my clients, if you're gonna say words, right? And those words are gonna shove down your throat sometime down the road, make sure those words taste.
Yeah.
Um I I would want my chief, I would want my manager, I want my boss at work, anybody, right? All of us want them to behave the way that they expect us in games, right? At all the times, whether cameras are on us or, right? Um I think that um if you are held to a different standard than the people who are supporting it to you, like something's well under standard and you need to change your standard, right? So that everybody's behavior is the same. I will tell you, the best run organizations in the world, don't put up with some really just simple things, disrespect, stealing, chingies, vony, and not doing your work, right? Those are the most, the most basic things. And if you are not meeting those basic, basic standards of professionalism, right? Then it's break.
And that could apply to police officers, it should apply to police officers, right?
Should, which is, you know, I mean, I I know that everybody, you know, has strong opinions in one direction and another regarding the cameras, right? Body more cameras, but I watch the videos of of interactions between police officers and the public. And I don't know if it's because of the camera or it's just because, you know, um the officers are always that professional. But when I see these videos, I am refreshed, I I really am, I'm like, yeah, those guys, we are very professional, right? And I pay attention not to what happens in the interaction. I pay a lot of attention to the bedside manner, the soft skills of police officer, the deescalating and setting a high standard for the interaction between them and the person they're contacting, even between them and the other officers with, right? And that's a good thing, at the end of the day, we're all public servants, right? And we are judged by the people we serve, the public, right? And if we're out there doing stupid things um that bring disorder to the worst to our organization, you really need to move on and go succeed somewhere else, right? But in this instance, uh as far as setting the tone, you know, if our chiefs um have fire and and at least, you know, honest, they're not dealing with people and and giving them respect and professionalism. Um but yet we expect that, because there is something.
So you read the rule of the law.
Yeah, I saw, so I saw there's concept rules here, right? I saw it, right? And so this is the case where uh Officer Vargas uh deployed a taser after, you know, being called.
It's a call for a child.
A child abduction, like in broad history, we have the child abducted two years ago, still unvet, right?
Have damage.
Officer Vargas then goes, answers the call, I think there's like a little chase around the commercial center, lights are on, right? And then finally, when the car stops, the guy gets out and Officer Vargas makes the call, you know?
Well, first he has him at gunpoint.
He has it at gunpoint and then tastes, right? And then, you know, he takes, he takes the uh the gentleman into custody. Here's, here's what I think, right? After reading all of that, um that that guy is lucky he didn't get shot. He's lucky that he got the gentle taser.
Uh we made that point bold and gunpoint to taser, that's a, that's a mindset for the.
And that's good training.
Yeah, well, here's, here's the deal, though, talk about training, not to get too far off on that, on. And I did, I haven't been through T A D training in a long time, but we generally don't deploy a taser because it is less lethal. It's not less than lethal, it's less lethal for uh when you're by yourself. If you're gonna deploy less lethal, you're supposed to have lethal cover.
Yeah, but let me just do a little point of order there, that's if the officer thinks, doesn't think he can do so safely. If the officer felt he could do so and still maintain the situation, that's where he went to the taser.
Yeah.
I think if you're dealing with a guy with a potential gun, they need to have cover and that kind of stuff. And 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 not to.
Well, I I'm I'm a, and I read it, but I'm I'm gonna somewhat disagree with that because I would give this guy the chance. Because fractions of a second matter in that situation. If I decide, because he's making a judgment call, and obviously he made the right one, that I can safely transition and all of a sudden he was wrong, this guy's got a gun, now he's got a taser, that he's by himself. Because if you have lethal cover, constantly pointing at him, if he does transition, well, he's still in danger, but not as much as he is, you know what I'm saying? So but there's nothing that's a hundred percent.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's up to him. He made, he made the right call. We weren't in, you know, as much as, much as we have an expertise in that situation, I wasn't in his shoes, feeling what he was feeling. And that's probably one of the most paramount, uh, case law cases, that versus honor, is when you're dealing with excessive force or alleged excessive force, you have to look at it through the eyes of the officer.
A reasonable officer.
Yeah, reasonable. Well, no one's reasonable left. There's nobody left reasonable in this world anyway. I'm, I'm, that's a whole nother subject, but you know what I mean? We're given to that point. But what we're seeing, then what happened in this situation, uh, they're making judgments, uh, on, on, um, certain little actions, so to speak. Let's say he was wrong, the guy did have a death, you know what I mean? Uh, and then he had to do whatever, and I would, I would, and after, but we, we need jerk because of what society expects. And let's say he shot him, he wasn't armed, you know what I mean? But he believed that he was armed, because he made a move, you know, uh, whatever. But we wanna kill that gnat because it's an isolated incident with the shotgun. By just get rid of it, like, almost like, hey, we just found the worst officer in the city, let's fire him, and that's what this chief is doing. For the optics of it, because the other part, I don't know if you've heard this, uh, every time they mention police and the political arena.
Right.
Accountability.
Right.
Like, you know, well, who the fuck is more accountable than an officer riding around with a camera filming?
Yeah, but.
Right? No one else is, you know, so yeah, we're accountable already, not to mention this, you know, security camera over here. And, and what's happening too is not even our own chief, it's leaning our way to go, let me give the benefit of the doubt to find out the facts before, and you've heard it in that clip, police turned it off way too hot.
Well, that was the point, like, that was what I was trying to make. The chief didn't really refute the chase.
Like, he didn't even know he had turned on his lights. He didn't even know, like, the chief, and, and again, like, I, I'm not trying to run any more quarterback, but the question is, as the head of an agency, you're getting ready to, to, to dispense discipline at the level of a firing.
Right.
So at four and a half years, the guy didn't have a job.
Yeah.
And you didn't know, you didn't read the case, you didn't meet with the I sergeant, you didn't have, you didn't have a meeting. I've been in these meetings, a lot of times it'll just happen right before you walk in, say, okay, somebody tell me about this. So the, the question was, as the head of an agency, what are your expectations to, to make sure that these things don't happen? If you're gonna fire, people do need to be fired. I'm the first one to say it. I had to give the administrator and recommend disciplinary action for people that were either transferred or ultimately dismissed. But never didn't have a grasp of the facts. Like, I knew what happened. I checked with everyone. I did what any investigator should. I wanna have all of my ducks in a row before I say you can no longer work here.
So, so a couple of things about this case in particular, the Vargas case. Number one, um, I'm, I'm, I try to approach these things by just assuming that everybody is on the up and up and everybody's doing what they believe the, the right, right? Um, I think, I think it's the right thing, so that everybody has, if they've looked at this case to remember that there, the nine oh one call was about a child being abducted and this or from that baby's.
And there were several, there were several.
And so number one, I'm thankful that that kid's okay.
Yeah.
I'm thankful that my mom was okay. I'm thankful that Officer Vargas, I'm thankful that there were smart people who called nine oh one, don't be bad. Number two, I'm thankful that Officer Vargas showed up, right? Um, and prevented something that, you know, um, couldn't have just catastrophic, right?
And that's what you want from the best officer you're trying to attain, a guy to go, hey, that call's just right over here. And they dropped that call and then they go that out. You know, that's what we did.
I'm really thankful that Officer Vargas, that's come, come up with his back and kids, I mean, uh, because it could have been, it was different.
Sure.
Uh, I'm also thankful that we've got a system in place that grinds slow, right? And so the arbitration, um, you know, complaint grievance, all that, it's a slow grind, but I think that it grinds, despite it grinding slow, it grinds fine, right? It's, um, I do respect the, the decision that arbitrator LaCunta came out with. Uh, I, I read it and it was very thoughtful. Uh, the city attorney and the chief, you know, I'm sure will disagree with every single word that is contained in that decision. But at the end, the, if one thing worked, it's that all the safety nets worked, right? The arbitration system worked for, you know, uh, the, the grievance system worked. Officer Vargas was, uh, was given all of his due process. That worked, right? Um, the kid's okay, right? Officer Vargas's family is not out there, you know, Javel is looking for, looking for a wife, right?
Anymore, yeah, because he went through four years and four months.
That's right.
And that's, that's the rap and the rhyme that we talk, and I appreciate your perspective.
And it's supposed to be, it's supposed to be difficult. You know, this, this labor and employment law stuff is, is supposed to fire somebody shouldn't be a difficult choice, right? Because you're making an ultimate decision that it's gonna come.
Well, that was our point. It didn't seem like it was a difficult choice.
And if it didn't seem that way, well, then the hands of water rings and truth, right? Because nobody should ever think that their boss was like, fired, screw it, fire. It's different, right? It should.
That's what's happening easily upstairs, just like what you said.
And if that impression is being made upon people, that these decisions are just being made really fast and loose, without thought to consequences, a reset button needs to be hit. Uh, and I think it is pushed up to the mayor's, uh, purview to call the chief and call the city manager and then say, I'm hearing way too many incidents like this of Vargas, right? Where people are making decisions in a flash. I need this to not be what I'm hearing, but right? Are we going to choose that oppression? Now, the mayor could then be satisfied with this, the chief and the city manager are saying, ah, everything's fine, you're just getting the wrong information, right? But I've been at this for eight years now, and what is absolutely crystal clear to me is that there's trust crisis between the frontline office workers and, you know, the back office, right, or the short office. And I, I have, uh, and that relationship needs to be repaired and can be repaired, right? Um, I just, I just think it's gonna require, one, some very, very, uh, big bites of humble pie, right? Because you've got egos on all sides of this, right? And the worst thing for, you know, maintaining relationships is ego. So people have to come in and be vulnerable enough to speak their piece, knowing that they're not gonna get fired or punished for speaking it, right? Um, and then they're gonna have to, after speaking their piece, and then sit on their hands, listen to each other, right? Um, that's a hard thing. Thankfully, I've spent twenty-five years of my career serving as a media, right? My job is to bring people to the table. I get paid to do it. Bring people to the table and get them through their most difficult disputes so that they can move forward and leave that garbage in the reunion, right? I would like to see a mayor, you know, who has to mediate disputes, right? Um, and, I mean, that's why I do this for a living, that's what I've been trained to do. I'm not, I'm not a police officer, right? I'm not an expert on, you mean, a Monday morning quarterbacking, you know, whether a taser or a gun or win or all that. But I do know that almost every dispute that has ever been presented to me regarding a police administration has a reservation, but it requires humility to sit down and listen, right? And I'm not sure that you guys are being listened to. I mean, that's why I'm here.
And I don't speak for every police officer. No one, no one pointed us, right? We just want to see, like I mentioned to you, we just wanna see the meta web out there represented fairly and justly. But I can tell you that I'm confident that every police officer, former or current, is, wants exactly what's used. They want the safe city. They wanna be able to be heard. They wanna feel like they matter, and they wanna be appreciated for what they do. And all of the things that you've said, um, are absolutely aligned with what people would take to get a police department back to what it once was. A great police officer, police department in Texas, and it's gonna have to start with leadership, real, real leadership.
So the, the other thing is, if it requires leaders like at City Hall to understand that even though the men and women in blue, right? Um, don't rank as high as the police chief and aren't up there at City Hall making the business. They're not stupid, right? And what I've found is that the police officers in San Antonio are very astute. And they know bullshit, but they see it, uh, and they know, they know the difference between up and down.
Would you agree that, that, and I just have to ask, because I know we're probably not gonna get you much, Albert, but would you agree that people that are on the police department make that choice consciously? They can be lawyers or doctors or military officers or work at U S A A. Some of them can code and be high-level mad. These guys make a choice to serve their community. They're not lesser, either.
Nope, and people, I think, uh, I think, I, I think elected officials don't appreciate, uh, and, uh, you know, many of them would be surprised. And I think elected officials, who they understand that this is a profession, it's supposed to be just an hourly job, right? This is not somebody just clocking in and, okay, these are professions, life long, such as this. Um, and so, you know, I'll tell you the things that, things that bother, right? Um, we, we've got one council member, uh, who was, you know, was swept in, uh, you know, on the promises of, of the foreign police by uh, defunding them, um, he's still there. The driving force between, you know, uh, behind him wanting to have served for office, uh, is still there, right? And it was not to make the city sound.
I would love to have that councilperson on this podcast, and I know that's your choice, but at the end of the block, I would love to have a conversation, feel like that.
And so, um, so if, if people are wondering, defund the police is a vibe and well, it lives in the city corner. And it sits on the city campus, right?
Well, I know it does.
And, uh, make no mistake, vibes is there. Now, there's fewer of them than there were before, right? You had Mario Bravo, you had Onasandaval, um, who were, you know, solo travelers with that, you know, that group. Um, and, you know, they're gone, they, uh, but, you know, you've had lockups to me.
Definitely.
Very consistent anti-police voters, I only got one. Uh, but, you know, it's, uh, one is still.
Could you ever win them back?
Funny, could you ever win them back? You know, I think the only way you win back a person who is completely anti-police is if that person finds himself in a very unfortunate position, having to call nine one one because of life, right? Um, after you call nine one one and police come near, rescue, but I think you have new appreciation for the job. But I've been in the unfortunate position of having to do that, even like my family, I may not pass away. I mean, very, very, at least two issues where I had to call one because my lives were running, and to this day, uh, you know, I remember the views of police officers, uh, like, you know, on Sundays, I pray for those officers and their families, was they safe, five, seven?
And that was one of the things I was gonna talk about, um, getting, you know, it was something that if we had time, and obviously if the, the topic came up, then I mentioned it. You're talking about.
Antibus.
Yeah. Um, how, how much does the city listen to groups like Act Four S? Because I know the media does. They're going to question some idiot from Act Four S about their opinion about, like, for example, when they wanted, uh, the San Antonio downtime library, wanted police presence, because they were having issues there. Well, they go to Jasmine, whatever the hell her name is, off of Act Four S, and she's a police staffer. Oh, no, there are some people that feel intimidated by the police. Who? Not the one, you know what I mean?
Criminal.
It's you, it's her, no doubt. But these people, as a organization, are asking for help because of safety concerns. Be, because of your disdain for it. You're speaking up, saying that's a bad idea. And so these people, and here's my thing with them, you have brought nothing to the table. Now that since the beginning of defund the police, you, to this point now, you have brought absolutely nothing but hatred and probabilities that, against the police and inflating, you know, small wrongdoings as, as, as the being representative of the entire police department.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? I call them the anti-police critics, you know, but are they necessary? I think there is, but I sure as hell don't believe anybody in city government should be listening to that.
So I, I, I think that people at city government, you know, listen to everybody, right? And then it's the weight of their voice that you give that determines whether or not you're a good leader, right?
And so, no, but if they don't bring anything to the table, I stop listening.
So I've always, I've always, somebody asked me the other day, are you gonna be the consensus mayor? Are you gonna be the consensus mayor? I was like, what does that mean? That you'll bring everybody to the table? No. Uh, and they clutch their pearls. They're like, how could you say that? Let me tell you what, I think this mayor, the next mayor, needs to set a table for people who want to move this forward, who want to be safer, who want to be fantastic, right? Uh, who wanna create jobs, who wanna, you know, bring people up. There is no place at my table for people who are only showing up grievance and cynicism and, uh, you know, a desire just to create chaos from the civic chaos, right? Um, they could sign out of the table, right? If you're anti-San Antonio, I told you this, right? If you're anti-safety, if you're anti, you know, uh, neighborhood, I'm really, I'm happy to hear you out, but your voice does not weigh as much at that point as the people who are trying to move this city forward into a.
That is such a paradigm.
So we're used to be there. So everybody, and it used to be, right? Uh, oh, you know, he is consensus builder, he is like consensus builder. I have no interest in building consensus with people who are just there to bitch, moan, and trip up progress.
But that's not all that D E I stuff, you know, like, they want every race cover creed at the table, you know? There, there's no way.
Name your issue. There's a person out there who's trying to impede progress, right? And they think they're doing some jobs work by and free in parts. Regardless, regardless of what label you put on them, there's always gonna be some person out there who's there just to bitch and bonus, right? I'm not interested in building consensus with you, bro, right? That, that, go do something else, right?
Yeah.
I will, as to, uh, you know, the anti-police, defund the police voices, actual questions, um, sadly, they're still in the ear of policymakers at city, right? Um, you know, our, our, my colleague from District Two, uh, you know, is one of the leading voices in this, you know, as it relates to anti-police sentiment to move up, and he is, he does, he does. Um, but his campaign managers, this was Williams.
Right.
Uh, there's campaign, there's a group of a husband, wife, teen, um, who are now representing more public officials than before. It means this, they were the pointy end of the stick, it's a way to defund the police and, you know, proposition A and, um, it's, um, it really worries me is you've got one of my colleagues who's live from there. Um, and she is now their client, and they are advising her, uh, all, you know, how to become mayor. I said it earlier, right? Personnel is policy. Our abuelitas used to say, dime con quién andas y te digo que eres, right? Tell me who you're hanging out with, and that's why you do it, right? Um, and, you know, the same group of people are running a candidate in my district, sweet. Uh, and think long and hard about whether elections, but third, it, it is a very scary thing where the campaign managers who are about police hate actors, right? Uh, are managing campaigns and, you know, uh, they're, they're candidates, like, but they're there, right? And they're making noise.
Well, I think that's, um, as we've seen.
And they're incredibly dangerous people. And aside from being incredibly dishonest, right?
Sure, they have to be.
But, uh, it's a, uh, it's a sad day when you have the advisors of the defund the police people, right?
What is it?
Now advising candidates.
So I had asked you earlier, you're, you're obviously very aware of what the voter turnout is in San Antonio.
Yeah, it's not good, man.
The last two, I, I, so the last two, Miracarrenberg won both, right? Yeah, one against Brock House, right? Right, the other one, I think, I don't even know who it was, but the last time, he won with sixty percent of the voter. And I think he had, I have it here, eighty-three thousand, oh, so a hundred and fifty thousand people voted in city of one point four, right? Now, they were registered. The tide before that, it was a hundred and ten thousand, and he went to a runoff with Blackout. So that's a scary thing.
It's a really scary.
Such a small number.
I blame it, I mean, and remember, I hate blaming, but, um, I'm not gonna blame it on people. I'm gonna blame it on myself. Um, I think too many folks think that social media and hitting the like or posting a comment is voting, right? Everyone, you know, I'm participating in public, in the public discourse, I'm participating in.
Agreement.
By clicking on Twitter. Tweeting is not effective at all as it relates to creation, uh, or moving forward of public policy. We're getting your guy elected, right? Um, and too many people think that, oh, well, didn't we just vote in November for, you know, Kamala or Trump? And they must have been there on the ballot. I'm not gonna vote again until November. And so getting people to come out and in, in with that thing in May is difficult enough. Getting people to come out in May, uh, requires a lot of church. And the age of the person who comes out in May is very different than the person who comes out in November, right? Um, you get, you get the whole spectrum in November, right? In May, uh, for municipal reasons, you know, a lot of seniors, a lot of seniors. They're, they're, you're most of the swarmed voter, you're most engaged voter, so whatever reason, right? Uh, but.
Through certain districts, they got more voters than others.
Um, yeah, yes, so District, my district and District Nine, uh, next door to my district are, uh, you know, the old refrain is, when this is, we, we, like, the human city hall. Um, it's less and less so because we're getting population shifts, um, because we're looking on a city. But still, they're incredibly, incredibly talented districts as far as, you know, getting the mayor elected. And I'll tell you, these districts do not, um, play a role with issues regarding safety. Uh, they do not want their safety experimented with. They want some pretty basic things, which by the way is what, you know, uh, is, is what I want, right? I wanna see more police. I wanna see more police officers during the day and during the night, right? I want more, uh, traffic officers, I want more, you know, officers in the convert, uh, which I know has been disbanded, which is change, uh, I want, uh, more SWAT, I want your, uh, you know, special victims, uh, op tech, you know, dedicated to domestic violence and abuse cases. I want more officers, period. And I want those officers to have the best, they have technology available to them in the United States. I want them to have the best cars available to them. And some things, and only recently, I think it was the last budget, we all discovered that the majority of vehicles that officers are in don't have that, uh, ballistic shield on the windows that only some SWAT vehicles did.
Uh, yeah, those are the specialized, they are just like you thought, almost like another day.
Yeah, I I'll tell you, most of the public believe.
Yeah.
That the cars that officers are in drive are cars that.
Those are the dogs, no, there's not.
And and that's not.
That's expensive.
Right.
You know.
However, there's there's that film on the window and so like, I I would like us to, with enthusiasm, figure out a way to get you guys the tools you need, um, and have that enthusiasm match the enthusiasm we have for the ballpark downtown. Right? If if we can get as excited about police officers and giving you guys what you need as we are about minor league baseball, then I think we're the right.
One of the, one of the biggest things that we talked about this earlier, I mentioned, I mean, the the biggest problems, it's a problem, is the politics.
Yeah.
And and the chief himself, McManus, said it in an interview, and if I can find it, I'll send it to you. But it looks awful, but it's watching. And I'm I'm really baffled how at this point, and would, you know, time in American, you know, the world, how ignorant we still are about police work and and use of force, not only from the public, but our own frigging administration. And I said this because, um, I I do some work for some other attorneys, and we had a couple of officers that were fired. And this was under the George Floyd effect, no, that's a long story with that. But we ended up, um, winning the case for both officers. Now they have, they're waiting for their arbitration to get their jobs back. But it was me and another expert, the guy who trained me and 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 led law portion of the academy, who retired as a patrolman. And I asked him, I said, why does it take a lowly patrolman, no disrespect, cause I'm a lowly detective retired, to explain justified use of force to the entire frigging police department? To put it in the right perspective for these officers to show that they did right and they were justified in actions. Yeah, it looked awful. Yeah, there were things broken, but that's because this guy did not comply. That's that's also the number one issue is compliance. Almost every situation, that's because this fool did comply to begin with. Now officers are just showing up and kicking the crap.
Willie, I think, I think America is a country of experts and, um, and and that's a big problem, right? So everybody in the United States is an expert on traffic management, infrastructure, taxation, Middle East, uh, conflict, right? Um, we're all experts on how school districts run, right? Um, and I'm being, I'm being facetious, right? But because of this weapon of massive, you know, mass destruction here, we know everything, right? And there's no convincing an American that they really might not know as much as other people who are true less, right? And so you can't lecture the Americans on, um, police. I feel every American knows hot takes.
I watch the S I, I watch, you know, yeah, yeah.
Everybody, and people who shot, the folks at CPS Energy get paid to do their jobs, right? How hard can it be? Just turn the switch on, right? I mean, it's, I mean, and everybody's an expert. And now post-COVID, everybody's an epidemiologist or a virologist.
Yeah.
Um, and and now this month, everybody is an expert on, you know, H one, B one, the B's. Yeah, have you seen that? I was like, like, give me a break. It's like, you know, immigration laws confusing, right? Yes, it's not for tweeting. But regarding the expertise of, uh, of the average American, when confronted with true expertise, unless there's leadership, right? At the mayor's office, at the county judge's office, at, you know, the state general, saying, whoa, 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 whoa. When it comes to the most important things, right? And that is use of force words, right? There really are experts here that are, right? Um, and because it is such a complex, delicate thing that just turns on these small issues, right? An officer will or will not use their job, uh, based on what happened within a millisecond, right? And it requires a lot of expertise and years of experience to be able to really interpret what happened there. Um, I think you need a mayor who respects that expertise, right? Who respects that mayor and everything, right?
Sure.
And.
Find those, find those people and then they're like, and what you said earlier, you guys in city government, and and it's not a false expectation, you, it is what it is. Who do I trust? Well, I trust the chief. He's telling me the right thing.
Yeah.
He's frigging not.
Okay.
He's not, you know, that that, I I don't wanna take off too much of the tangent with it. Um, that UTSA hotspot crime initiative.
Right, right.
All that is, is to me, a scientific experiment that they are using to check the true numbers of how bad crime is, because all you gotta do is say, hey, look, these hotspots, pardon us down. You know, like, we, like, you know, well, we're both here, you know, I've got a gun somewhere, you know, to say, this is the safest place. Of course it's gonna be. Even the dumbest of the dumbest crooks isn't gonna do shit around.
Well, they put a car there.
Yeah, we think they.
Right.
Crooks are the smartest people in the world, they know when we were working, they're gonna take that, I'll work on this day because these dudes are working.
They should go down.
But but I do, I do wanna type. I I guess if we're getting to that COVID part, but at least, at least just, just mention as a council for the district I live in, if to attain the goals that you already laid out for us, one, safe city, proud police department, best of the best, you gotta reexamine proactive policing. You gotta take the handcuffs off these guys, you gotta go say, hey, you're gonna be held to how I achieve your expectations. You must be a professional, but go get the ten percent of people that are committing ninety percent of the crime there. There's a lot of shootings that they have a gun, put them in jail, if they're on parole, put them in jail. We're not documenting gang members, prison gang, with street gang members. We gotta start doing these things again to get us back to the point where the criminals know that if you're doing A B L C, it may not be today, but we're coming a day. It may read a while, but we're coming for you. That's not happening now, so.
So I, um, I don't know if Chief McManus or Eric, really dumb as we're watching a podcast, but once they hear this, the councilman was on there, they just might take the top.
That's our hope.
I, uh, my hope from from this conversation today is if they do watch it, is if they listen, right? They may not agree, right? But they listen to what you guys were expressing, because what you guys are expressing is not verbal from other officers who are currently, right? Right? Um, and my hope is that after they listen, that, um, they'll they'll really take me serious. When I say that, and I can get next mayor, on the day one, we are all standing in front of that city hall to make a declaration about a new day in San Antonio that appreciates its values. Or two, that I'm dead serious, we will have a board, um, of advisors for the mayor made up of from the former police officers, uh, with no filters, right? How, and the third one is, I, no kidding around here, right? Only way and let and let nobody mistake what I pride to be. The only way to make this the safest city in the United States is if we have mayor officers. They gotta be the life.
It's not gonna be real. You can do more with less than better with less if if they are trained in the right way.
Yep.
But it is, it is huge staff, but no doubt.
Numerically, the city is growing by leaps and bounds, and it's at least in bounds that we cannot fall behind. I think any organization that tells us, we're gonna be proactive in everything we do except for this, in this thing, we're gonna be reactive. When we hear the sentence, I'm gonna be the leader, reactive and proact, why the hell are we not being proactive?
No, that's, you have leaders that are saying that right now, because there's no proactivity goal on in the city because the officers are afraid to do their job. So they're, you're, you're afraid that the more you work, the more potential public will get into. And, um, I think we should close here in a little bit, but what I'm seeing here is that I've seen it, but come to cheap. He's firing these people because of the awful but lawful, the optics of it. And that way he lets an arbitrator.
Yeah.
Win their job back. So when this officer, if if he does that way, screws up again, hey, I got rid of, they brought him back. That's why everybody did all these.
Can I write that this on this podcast?
I wanna do away with the collective bargain, the arbitration, you may get his job back, but we're gonna look like.
Right.
And it's a passive of the buck, and he doesn't think twice about it. And and you as a, as a, the United City Government, how much money is he costing this, the taxpayers to go through litigation on something that is easily, the officers don't think? Only to look good, you know, to all what he thinks is the majority of the public, which I don't think so. And for what we've talked about, I don't think you think so. The the public wants a safe city.
So I I've got to serve alongside Chief McManus, I have almost ten years. Um, for that, Chief McManus was the, our go-to, um, for the battered women's relationship, right? It is, we need that relationship, it's very important and, um, I I, it's a symbiotic relationship, right? Our our success, success, and vice versa. Um, I've, every time I've ever dealt with Chief McManus, he has been very professional. Anyway, it's a squeak challenge. Uh, he has been, has never given me reasons to believe that, you know, he's been buying to me or he's giving me half-trains, but. Um, it's been very kind to me, even when I was, right? Um, my constituents, London, I mean, I I, it it's.
The boss, we're, we're.
He falls higher than, you know, than any elected official in town. So there's three brands in San Antonio, which I think are just the word, one of them is HEB, the other one is Spurs. Leave it or not, in the neighborhood, people love their chief, right? He's done an excellent job of of of, you know, connecting with them. Um, and I've spent enough time to him to let, to persuade, to convince him that he really does want a safe, safe, safe city. Like, that's really what he wants, right? Um, and if there is a doubt as to his intentions, uh, and if the men and women in blue doubt his intention, at least some is both for me, and we need to fix that, right? Because either, either he does feel this way and somehow that sentiment and that that priority is not getting down to, is that being perceived by people, you know, at on the frontline? Or two, he doesn't feel that way and everybody's figured out that he doesn't feel that way, and I don't think it's the.
Can I clarify?
I'm open, I'm open to conversations about fixing this trust crisis, it needs to be fixed for.
I it's clarifies, because my position was a little different than Willie's, right? So I was a captain in for eleven, twelve years, and then I was a downtown as an entry. And I've often contemplated that McManus has done the right thing, but you could get to him to explain the right thing.
What he's.
His advisors are the problem, okay? And he insulates himself so much that he really doesn't get to talk up to, talk to people to say, hey, chief, like, have you made whatever decision you want, but this is wrong. It's the people he surrounds himself with that are giving him bad advice and nobody else, and because influence, access is is power and influence. And and just so we clarify it, we've said some very strong statements on this podcast, but Chief McManus has never personally done anything to either one of us.
Ha ha.
There is no them that here.
Like.
You have said that a few times at the beginning, I got, you know.
Yeah.
There is nothing that he has done wrong to me. He treated, actually treated me fairly, you know, he worked with them under a different circumstances and all that. That's, it's, I did say it in one of the last podcasts, if not the last one, I did have a, I didn't say it, I didn't have a bone pick. I do now, this is finally good for themselves.
Right, right.
And good friends of mine, you know, and it's and it's deteriorating, it's an ambrosia of this department that you're trying to build. You know, and I believe it's it's political stunt of passing the buck to show these anti-police activists that, hey, I'm doing something about it. And and Mickey, but he has no reinforcement, these officers get their jobs back, you know, after forty years. You don't gotta get the same offer back. This dude isn't plugging in, Vargas isn't going, when do I get to go start arresting that guy again? He is like, we're, cause I asked him this question, you must be spooked? Well, I asked him this question, because I, for one, I called him just to get his permission to talk about him. And I said, and at the time, he was about to go to work, he had to be retrained because he was out so long, recertified. I said, I'm gonna ask you this question, what are you gonna do differently in your next call? Let's say very similar call that you got, to not land you the same predicament that you were in the last four years. And he didn't say a word, it was a long pause, like, it's a fair question. I said, well, your answer should be nothing, because you didn't do anything wrong. I said, but you're going to. And the problem is, is you hesitate, trying to figure out what can I do differently than the last time? You you might get for killed or someone else. So there's what's occurred with an officer and all of them did have come back. These two guys are back to three now, wait, we get their jobs back. You're not gonna get the same officer, their spirits are killed, they've been murdered, like bullshit, like what he built, you know what I mean?
Uh, yeah, if I've learned anything from this conversation, the hat guys, it's that your hearing wasn't, it validated, uh, for me that there is a, that there, that the morale crisis is really sort of founded upon the price of trust, right? Um, and, you know, you know this as well as I do, right? Once you lose someone's trust, winning it back is so difficult, almost skin. But, you know, I think this next mayor, it's me, for anybody else, and I hope if it's anybody else, they understand that they've got a long road, road a hole here as far as winning that trust back. Uh, because right now it's not sustainable, right? It's and it's unacceptable, I don't think the public would say, oh, yeah, I I think this is fine, it's not fine. And your police officers don't trust them in this vision, that's, that's not funny, it's not a.
Then just to 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 finish the, you know, just to kind of round it out, what I was saying, I was like, guys, when we started, Willie said, hey, why don't you jump on here with me? And it was just once and now if you can't get rid of me. But really, it's just, chief, do the job at the same level you expect everyone else to do theirs.
Right.
Don't look at your job as an inconvenience, don't look at handling these things or reviewing files or going over cases and not preparing, do it at the highest level, just like you expect everyone else to do theirs. And know that the information you're getting isn't always accurate. Do a little more to make sure before you fire someone, that you know what you're doing, and if they need to be fired, fire them. Just do your work so you can say, this is why I did it, and I'll stand before any arbitrator and justify my actions. That's all we're saying, to create a just environment. Because to your point, if we've made this point several times, the men and women of the police department always think to post, and the men and women, like, that is special. And so if you have the right people in front of you, you're gonna get all the things you want San Antonio to have.
The main, main thing is, yeah, I'm actually totally underlay back, I wanna make sure we get it in. Uh, what can city council do more, uh, or less, uh, to really attack this problem, uh, officers, so? And and I'm asking because it's first of all for me, my best friend in the whole wide world left my house soon. Uh, they said goodbye, gave him hugs, he said tomorrow, what home to tell him, so? Others, um, and I mean, to this day, nobody really understands why the hell should get that, right? But the devastation that left with plane, uh, for everybody who was in his and his wife, uh, that they still felt to this day. And I'd like to think that I understand suicide a little bit better than I did in the past, by still, it seemed to me, it's a mystery, but as a pinnacle leaders, a city, right? What should a mayor of the city council do to to make sure that we have lessons?
Man, that's a, that's a loaded question, because we want, wanted to do a podcast about that. I I can only tell you this, first of all, I don't blame the head of the EDU C for losing, for someone taking their own, like, that's just not fair. But like the point I made earlier, it's, I think when you get so many different elements collapsing at you at the same time, it just sometimes becomes over, overbending. And when we had the the rash suicides, I think there was six or seven in three thousand, or two, two years ago, or, yeah, twenty twenty-three. Oh, it had the names, but I don't have it with me, and I'm sure fame will have them, shame on me, I don't have them, no checks. But I just think what happened right after that is that the chief made sure everybody put these in the other. Now, we have three major things, one, we have psychological service, peer-to-peer, and one other. Think really, as a leader, what I would have done, what really would have done, I think what you would have done, was a great opportunity, because you can't make every roll call. But, uh, just a role call to you, everyone sees, hey, I'm here for you to matter. I think that's a, okay, but you have to matter. And if you feel like you don't matter, then those start, those things start to build up. And then, like I was saying, if your personal life is collapsing, you're unhappy in your work life, now you have some financial prices.
Right.
And then all of a sudden, you start buy into this thing that maybe the world's better without you, maybe it's an easier path, and I'll go explore all suicide. But I I guarantee you that almost every officer that has ever worked in the police department has felt some of the things that are in the general man. You can hang your throat, always, yeah? Have you taken it out on other people that you care about? Probably. You know, there's a lot of things and probably a better person to answer those questions would be psychiatrists or officers that have found themselves in a position where they've even contemplated doing that. And I think there's probably a lot of, I don't know, Willie, which which are you? And I think there's probably a lot of them, I don't know, Willie, which, which are you into?
Um, to me, I like to put it in my likes and returns, and just like you said, we're not psychologists, psychiatrists, or anything like that. Uh, obviously, we've been in the shoes of these officers, we've had ups and downs and things like that. There are some, some things that y'all cannot absolutely do anything about, personal relationships and, and, you know, their own state of mind regarding other things. But the biggest thing that y'all can do, and we've been talking about it, you've been talking about it literally since you walked in, is your support for the police and their best, with a native morale, just to show these officers that y'all have their back.
You know?
That is it, and fairing, you know, like I said, there's gonna be some times, yeah, there's, they're gonna have to be fired due to this, whatever. But just, because right now, as you're hearing, and if you need to clarify, you're hearing that these officers can think, they don't feel like anybody is, is protecting them. And the work that they do, you know, because it's, it's not easy, it's very complicated job. There's so many ways to skin a cat, they, they, their police work, every call. Uh, I do tactical training, and I tell these guys, I, if I had time to put you through a million scenarios, and I like, I like to pride myself on my scenarios to be realistic, the real situation you'll be in on the street will not be one of them.
Right.
It'll be close to it, because that, that's a whole point of training, that you can be prepared yourself for that. Um, and I, you know, as, as a, as a trainer, I'll see an officer do something, because I have to expect expectations usually. I'll see an officer do something that's totally different, and I'm like, before I go, no, no, you, no, you didn't do it right. Oh, what were you thinking? And when they tell me what they were thinking, again, because it goes back to that case law, his state of mind, okay? I, I, I get why you think that.
Right.
You know what I mean? And, and, and that, that's being fair. And I think all the officers, because they themselves respect to be fair in their job, being impartial, unbiased on that stuff, understandably. They just want the same return. And the people that do have any impact on their livelihood, their jobs, you know, is not in the city government. You know, and obviously, y'all are responsible for the chief of police and the things here. Um, I think it's time for McManus to go.
Okay.
I think he's stale, um, and like he said, he's surrounding himself with a bunch of yes people. And that's what you've seen in these, uh, exit interviews that we've talked about. Um, he's getting older to begin with, you know? Because if you get older, no matter, you, you can't still be old, I mean, you still a little bit, a little bit, but you have to be up with everything else too. I don't think he's doing that. It's more like, well, yeah, the police did wrong, let me get rid of them, and let best punches bring them back, and no sweat off his back, or anything like that. But that's my take on it, you know? And I tell you this, like I mentioned, the moment you walked in, the things that I heard from Dave, is he back with you? I love what you're saying, and I could tell it's genuine. I can tell you don't have any notes, other than what we gave you, that you want a minute ago, if I'm asked this, I'm gonna do this. You weren't like.
Nothing was off limits.
No, 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 that's the other thing, we made sure that you didn't have that, you know? Hey, we, no, you said, ask me whatever, you know? And, and I totally appreciate that.
Yeah.
You didn't spend a week at, you know, summer camp to, to have someone like me and David, you know, question you, so you could prepare your answers, like we see some politicians do. Um, but I, I think we've got a lot tonight.
Yeah.
Let me tell you, because what, what you said was, was heavy, right? I mean, you, you literally are telling a city, city council that, um, that you need to see, that, that you would like to see a loose chief, then, though, right? That's not, not.
I didn't say that, but I mean, if that's, that's the course of.
You know what I'm saying? Forgot you phrased it, but we have that.
It's never a sign for him.
I just said it's time for him to go. Now, again, I, you know, it, to me, if I were to say, hey, he needs to be fired, that just turns people off. I don't, you know, that's not my challenge.
But, but there's a point, you're right, you're like, I'm not trying to cut you off, but it's not Willie saying it, and it's not David saying. That's, that's, no, it's the whole police department said it, because in 2016, you were just appointed the council. You didn't have no confidence, well, wrong. Ninety-seven percent of the police officers had no confidence.
Yeah, yeah.
So a lot of voter turnout, we had more than any contract. You're right, so it's a heavy thing to say, no one wants to tell someone they shouldn't be on the job. If, if McManus changed his MO tomorrow, because when he first got here, he was a terrible chief. Uh, if you remember, people have short memories, right? And I even made the point in the podcast, they bank on short news site. So whenever they do something squirrely, they know in a couple of days, this is gonna go away, because something else is gonna come up. And they know that, they're very savvy at that work. But when he first came, just, when he first came, his whole mission was zero tolerance on crime. Granted, the crime response unit took the best, best guys with the best reputation, put them over there and put all these go-getters over there and worked hard at crime. He worked at anything, because the political hours have shifted. So he hasn't always been a bad chief. He's not a very, he's, he, he's, currently, he is not a membership chief. He doesn't relate to the men and women toward the ballpark. If that means that someone else needs to be in that position, then that's just what it means.
So, so it's heavy, what you guys are talking. Um, and that, that was not on our list, and it's perfectly, and I'm actually happy that, that we're, we're having a real difficult conversation here. Um, I'll tell you in response, and, and it's not a response to PZ or Finstry, but, um, it's that response. I think two things can be true at Montag.
Let me.
One, that your dissatisfaction and dissatisfaction of the men and women who were used to, uh, is right, right?
They know.
And two, I think that, uh, our chief is an honorable, he was the best for the city. Uh, and the daylight between these two things, right? That is where the problem lies, right? And I think that the next mayor needs to figure out a way to brain everybody together so we can close that gap. Because I, uh, it's breaking my heart a little bit to hear you guys, uh, express such dissatisfaction with, uh, with, uh, kind of like chief leadership up there, when I know him to be a good man and who wants that's best, right? And we've given you a lot to think about today, we gather this, I mean, generally, very trundled and alarmed, uh, that they hear some of these things, uh, and I came here to listen and learn to you guys, that you guys are talking about. And again, I'm, I'm still gratitude that you guys gave me the opportunity.
We, we appreciate, yeah, yeah, I, I really do appreciate this. I mean, it was a lot more, I didn't really have any expectations, but I, and I guess you always have to have some. And this was way better than what I could have, I could imagine, you know? Uh, number one, you agreed so quickly, and then your answers and stuff. Um, and what I said about, you know, needing to be gone, and I appreciate you giving me an answer, because I was, you know, not expecting. I didn't really expect you to answer that, but I wasn't saying, could you get rid of them? You know what I mean? Yeah, I mean, obviously, you're gonna get in there, you're gonna give everything is due diligence, and, and try to reconstruct. You have a, you know, if, if God willing, you do get in that position, you have a long road ahead of you, because it's been damaged so much. And I'm not gonna say it's all from him, because this is the climate across the United States, you know? Hopefully, we're coming back, you know, getting back in order, you know? I believe, like, like what's happened with the national election, I believe that, you know? But, um, we're gonna close out here, and I, I, man, I'm, I'm telling you that I'm, I'm really excited for people to listen to this.
Yeah.
You know, uh, and to hear your, your take on things.
So, so can we add a positive note?
Yeah.
Because that one was heavy, but I, I will tell you, maybe one of the highlights of my career, and I'm talking about my very long, long career, pre, uh, council, all of my highlights, I got to go to Coney Row, uh, my very first time, through our association. And I saw those chickens, I saw that rooster out there, right? Uh, they named him Pruster.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, and I saw the, uh, the condition of little, uh, chicken coop that somebody had built.
Those, those little.
Yeah.
Figure this out, yes, if they take pride.
And, uh, it was a piece of garbage. So I went to, uh, I went to Clark High School, and I met up with the shop teachers.
Okay.
And all the kids that work shop, and they, I gave them this, uh, carpentry assignment, and we built them a Taj Mahal.
The chicken, what do you?
The one with.
The one that's there now.
The one that's there now.
Yeah, I'll make up some, yeah.
And we had the police officers show up to receive their chicken and food, uh, at Clark High School. I think everybody was like, it's goofy, this councilman wanted this, and I wanted only one.
Did I ever tell you the story?
Yeah, those chickens. Well, no, no, but, 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 but let me tell you, I wanted one thing. I wanted there to be a positive experience to the police officers and these kids in the shop, uh, and their council members. Because I think if you get people together, right? And he's got a way to have everybody drop their, and just keep people around each other, working on one timing bulb, right? Um, really good things happen. And we gave those kids, many of them, this was maybe that are first contacted police, I mean, we, right? Um, and I went to high school, and you guys went to high school, and you know, that some of the guys in shop, like, that plans, you probably are only in an acceleration, right? Uh, and that they were gonna have future contacts with police, but their very first effort was a positive one, right? Um, and with officers that were smiling and you know, appreciating and all that. I'm trying to create more.
To you on.
More of those events where officers have contact with public, where, and even with their own government, right? Where we bring them all together. Blue Santa program has been of God's sake, right? Um, whenever I've needed officers individually or as a group to do something for shelters, for child advocate center, for charity guidance center, for, you know, more mental churches, they've always been there. And I think if, if, uh, if I accomplish anything as the mayor, it'll be that I'll be the one guy who consistently reminds them, so these are St. Antonius two. And that their kids go to our kids' schools, they go to the same churches with you, they all are cheering for the Spurs, and they're all disappointed that we're all stuck in their heads, and like that, you know, the lines at each year.
I think that would be a great thing.
And.
And worried about their families, and dignity from, uh, the prime.
Yeah.
We can't be everywhere.
Exactly, and I think if we just bring things down back to their being six, right? Which is, this is people serving.
What, what's the new creed? Buro Santor.
Buro Santor. Well, that's better than the one I came up with. I came up with one of two, and you guys, something what you think, uh, batos locos para.
That's a great move.
That's already taken. Somebody wanted me to do, uh, make the Dominion grade again, I'm not sure.
But, but, uh, but that is a good move.
Yeah, so, so anyway, I, I appreciate you guys, my goal here is to make sure that other people who really haven't given much thought, develop an appreciation, uh, the way I have. And, um, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll go to my grave, can, you know, trying to convince people that what they think about these officers is probably not entirely accurate, but that's how it was back.
But I have to say this, this is a very young podcast for me, Willie's been doing it a little longer. I, I can't tell you how much it speaks to you, uh, as a, as a candidate for the seventh, our decision here position, as a current council, but to come and spend this much time with us. That on your own, talking to us, with no inhibitions, and no, like, don't ask me this, don't ask me that. You're, you're super impressive. You just spent an hour and a half with me at breakfast just talking about this, coming here.
If any, any officer watching, ever wants to just whisper in my ear and tell me, hey, I think this could be improved, just call. And if you don't have my number, call these guys, they'll get you in touch. I won't, I will not turn your call away, and we may agree, and we may disagree, but at the very least, I'll hear you out, and you know?
I just.
Or I'll forget your name at the end.
There's more, and I can even articulate that you spent this much time talking to a couple of retired guys, and best of luck in your campaign.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you so much for joining us.
Thanks.
Good luck. I appreciate it, man.
All right, guys, Merry, Merry Christmas.
Yeah, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.